Hi, everyone. Evening. I'd like to get the meeting underway. I want you to have your, uh, how do we all play in the US meeting of November 23rd, makes 2015. Um, we have this very information. There are really three public hearings going on tonight. Uh, we'll each do each one individually, um, but I do have a sign up sheet, um, for the Mohawk Preserve, um, uh, public hearing. So if you, if you want to speak at the public hearing, um, for Mohawk, uh, I'd ask you to sign, sign up on that and we'll go for that audit. For, um, board first up on the agenda tonight is review and approval of the minutes of November 9th. Um, I think George did added a tweak at the end and Kelly incorporated it into the, uh, minutes that have been distributed to you at your desk.
I need a motion to accept the minutes from November 8th.
Thank God. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is public hearings. First up on a, uh, public hearing for, uh, LP builders, you know, on, uh, Route 208. Have a motion to open a public hearing on LP builders. Uh, go down to the second. I get it down. All in favor? Uh, anybody wishing to speak at LP builders, uh, public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, are you going to have the applicant make a presentation on his new plans as part of the public hearing?
No.
Okay. Well, then we'll get sort of, uh, sort of them.
John Bodendorf, Hudson Land Design. We're the engineer retained by Mr. Stutt, who is the adjacent property owner to the project, uh, down school for the project. We've reviewed the latest plan set and, uh, pretty happy with the clarity of it. We still have some of the same concerns that we've been talking about for almost two years now. They changed the design of the septic, uh, the grades where the septic are being proposed are in the 20 to 25 percent range. The type of system they're using, the manufacturer, and it's even stated on their plans, uh, states very clearly that they're not to be used on slopes that exceed 15 percent. So we understand that the Health Department is going to have to review this again, but in our professional opinion, they, they shouldn't be approved. As far as stormwater goes, we're, we're satisfied with what they're doing, um, with surface runoff, but there still has been, um, no attention paid to the groundwater component. Um, they're proposing to put, uh, water from the lots into the ground with an overflow to the soil. Um, there's an obvious groundwater problem downstream, so that really needs to be addressed through, you know, short of putting in some kind of elaborate curtain drain system that they mean, we were recommending that the board require that they consider a hydrogeologic study to look at that. And also with regards to the stormwater system, they still, um, we still have concerns with how they're proposing to address long-term maintenance right now. It appears that they're leaving that up to the lot owners, um, and that, that simply is not a good idea.
John, we've more time would be beneficial to you in terms of the depth of your review. If you, for the record, it being the state of the chairman, we request a more time.
Yeah, of course. I, I didn't get to go through everything with a fine tooth comb, um, given the short time period from when we were, uh, privy to the new plan set, so additional time would be, um, welcome.
John Lyons, attorney for Eric Stutt. We have, uh, I do want to reiterate the request for more time. We were able to review a lot of the material, not being sure whether you would be inclined to grant the request. We, uh, produced letters. You'll, uh, in your package is a letter from John Bodendorf, two-page letter, which just goes through, uh, in a little bit more detail, his findings so far, uh, on the review of the plans. Also in your packet is a letter from my office, setting forth, uh, some of the concerns that we have based on the review that we've done so far. Um, what I want to say is, uh, I want to, the, the plans, the quality seems a little bit better. The, the design is different, but two, uh, elements remain the same, and that is, this is still too steep and too much. Um, and those things haven't changed from the last plan. As John mentioned, um, one of the things that I really would like you to, uh, focus on as you go forward is that the information in the revised plan has really made it clear that the actual topography of this property, that the slopes are at 20 to 25 percent, not 15 to 20 percent. And in, in our opinion, um, this, uh, project has always been a bridge too far, uh, in the sense of the, what the applicant's trying to pack onto this property. And when you look at the, you know, 20 to 25 percent slopes across this property, it just makes that gap even wider. Uh, it, it exacerbates the concerns that Eric has about the impacts on this property. It, uh, it really drives home some of, uh, the concerns that the ENCB raised in their January 2015 letter. Uh, not all of those concerns have been, uh, addressed adequately, um, by this plan. And, uh, as John said, um, it also raises a real issue with regard to whether the wastewater disposal systems can, for this project as proposed, can be approved by, uh, the Department of Health, um, which are not supposed to be, you know, approving subsurface systems on slopes greater than 15 percent. And as John mentioned also, um, the manufacturer specs for this wastewater disposal system, uh, do not recommend the use of the system on slopes in excess of 15 percent. And again, here, we're talking about 20 to 25 percent. There, Eric will talk to you, uh, in just a second about some of the other concerns that remain for him, but, um, we think that there are still a lot of significant problems with this property that haven't been addressed. The issue of maintenance of the stormwater system is something that, uh, really no information has been given. As you know, we've commented in the past that there needs to be, if these systems are not maintained properly, then they're not going to function properly. And if they don't function properly, then the slowing of the rates and the management of the stormwaters, um, that are supposed to be a protection for Mr. Stutt's property, then those precautions aren't going to work properly. And then, you know, his problems are going to be even greater. So as we advocated before, there really needs to be some assurance going forward, long-term, that these systems are going to be maintained properly. We have, uh, laid out for you in our letter, I know we've appeared before you, uh, many times, but we've laid out in our letter, uh, the detail of some of our other concerns. I won't go into those tonight, but I would ask you to take a few minutes, if you'd be kind enough at some point, and really sit down, take a look at our letter. It's only five pages and, um, you'll see the complete list of our concerns at this time. And in the meantime, we'd like to have one more month, at least, to be able to let John really, uh, dig into these plans. There's a lot of material, over a hundred pages, almost a hundred pages, and we'd like a little bit more time. Kelly, by the way, was wonderful for us. We were able to get copies of those plans very quickly and that was really helpful, but we still would like to have some more time. So we, uh, too big, too steep. That's still the case.
Okay.
In your letter memo from today, I don't think you got it in our email, so are you giving me a moment?
Yeah. Send it in. Thank you for your attention.
I'm Eric Stutt. I live at 28 Cedar Ridge and I'm speaking for myself and my neighbor Vincent Luft at 30 Cedar Ridge Road. And I've lived here since 1986. I'm glad to be living in a town where your predecessors and this board have established rules and regs, the foresight to have those rules and regs, that protect property owners from any damages that might be incurred from those who want to build next to them or near them. Uh, in the General Town Planning Board Guidelines, the standard support at your consideration includes the adverse effects of new construction on adjoining neighbors. I am that adjoining neighbor. Mr. Luft is that adjoining neighbor. When I first started coming here back, say, 22 months ago to discuss these issues, I explained that when I first moved into New Paltz, my property was densely wooded, a canopy of trees, dense, dense trees, maples, oaks, and hickories, most of them in the 40 to 50-year-old range. Shortly thereafter, just after West Falk Drive was constructed, I began to notice the die-off in my trees. I presented this to you before, but it's just sort of a rehash of that, but I think it's pertinent. So back around 2006, 2007, I started to notice the die-off in my trees. In 2009, I had visits by a hydrologist, as well as by Gary Capella from the Ulster County Soil and Water District, and both of them confirmed that the trees were dying because of excessively wet soil, which hadn't happened in the preceding 15 to 18 years that I had been there. Something had changed. So despite following all the recommendations that came from the Oil, uh, Ulster County Soil and Water District, doing all the things that they talked about trenching, building up berms and redo, and diverting water, and all that was done at my own expense, the die-off has continued, to the point now where about 50 percent of my property, or more than 50 percent of my property, is wet most of the time. And it's now totally denuded of tree cover in the worst areas. There's not a tree left standing in those areas. Members of the, of the board came out here back in May and saw the damage and saw the trees, and it most recently fallen and, uh, removed. So I don't expect anybody to turn back what has happened, but I do call on the planning board to be sure that before any further development occurs on the hillside above me, that there's a reasonable certainty that the new development with this attendant soil destruction or disturbance, tree removal, creation of impermeable surfaces and septic discharge will not adversely, uh, will not adversely affect our properties, the remaining tree cover, the degree of water saturation, and ultimately our property values. Please keep in mind the photos we brought here just about a year ago, showing stormwater damage after a less than severe storm, less than a 50-year storm. Mr. Luft's driveway at 30 Cedar Ridge Road was obliterating. It was covered with water. Emergency vehicles would not have been able to cross there. This became a real safety hazard. No more water can really safely be added to that, that drainage system by any means, however slow, however fast, however little, it cannot tolerate any more water there. I've reviewed the plans presented by the applicant, and I'm aware that they have recommended new infiltration system and ways to slow the velocity. Now, although I don't have an engineering background, my simplistic understanding is that the proposed development is an area that is steeply uphill of me. They happen to have a soil that percolates very well, but below that soil is a deeply, rather impermeable surface. When you come down to my property, that impermeable surface, that relatively impermeable surface, is much higher. I have a very thin layer of topsoil. Despite their attempts to do infiltration, slow velocity, all of that, which are commendable, that water coming down that hillside is still going to end up on the top of that impermeable surface and will be, and making my wet surface even soggier and messier and more inhabitable, uninhabitable for the trees or for my use of it. Again, I don't expect the applicant to correct pre-existing conditions, but I don't want to see it become worse because of this project. I do have an observation. I've lived along Route 208 for the last 30 years, and I go up and down 208 several times every single day. Almost all, if not all, of the six houses that are immediately south of this project have transitioned from their, uh, have been approved as single-family sites, and all of them are two-to-five bedroom houses. Every one of them has transitioned to stu, what appears to be student housing. I haven't gone door-to-door to ask, but I can see the students, I go by every morning at seven o'clock on my way to work. I see five, six cars there, many days, in their driveways. I know that this is not single-family housing. I know there are multiple students. Do we have any reason to believe that this projected project with two four-bedroom houses won't also become multiple occupant locations with absentee landlords, increased water usage, increased septic, increased flow downhill, increased demands on their septic systems, increased car usage, increased volume of traffic across their own properties, just more soil disturbance, and increased water, water damage caused by that? And none of this is being planned for, because I don't believe there's just going to be a four-bedroom house. I think it's going to be a four-bedroom house with multiple people living there. So please be sure that our, that our current problems are not made worse by this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anybody else wish to speak on LP builders?
Uh, there was somebody in front of me. I'm not, uh, in the, uh...
I think my side is on this.
Oh, okay. Uh, good evening. My name is Joe Ariel. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Um, I, I'd like to start by saying that we actually agree with Mr. Stutt in terms of the essential, um, function of this review. We believe that this development has been engineered in such a way that it will certainly, with a reasonable degree of certainty, to use his words, not make his situation worse. Um, in fact, we think in all likelihood it will improve the situation. We're very comfortable with the level of engineering. As you know, we took a good deal of time, um, in taking a look at all the comments that, uh, came in to date, um, the last time we made a presentation to you. There has been a new submission, and again, we're very confident that the engineering is outstanding. This is, uh, a development which is, uh, essentially, it's, it's not a packed site. It is proposed as a two-lot subdivision. It is zoned for such a use. And the construction that happens there and the residential use that happens there will be within the law and within the code. That's, I mean, that is a certainty. So, uh, as far as any other regulatory approval, the DOH approval's been referenced here today, of course, it will need, the, the system will have to be approved by DOH. That, again, that's a certainty, and we acknowledge that. Um, we do not agree, of course, that it's a system that couldn't or shouldn't be approved, wouldn't have proposed it if we thought that was the case, and the next, if, if you do continue the public hearing, we'll be prepared, uh, next time to address each and every concern. The last thing I'd like to say is, and we do have John Queenan, um, the project engineer here, um, should you like a presentation, you mentioned you did not, and that's fine with us. Um, we would like to say, though, that with respect to the request for additional time, um, the, uh, the attorney, the engineer, Mr. Stutt, um, did have a chance to review this submission. It was submitted on the timeline that this board set. I believe November 9th was the date of the submission, which was the timeline set. They appear to have had a chance to look at it. I don't doubt that they want more time to look at it. Um, but I'm not sure that that's necessarily reason enough, um, to extend that time. The plans that were submitted were specifically designed to be responsive to the comments made, um, at previous public hearings. So I would ask the board to take that into consideration when you determine how to handle that aspect of whether you extend the public hearing. Would also ask the board to consider that if you do that, I would very much appreciate the board setting some, um, some guidelines, so to speak, for those comments, so that we don't end up back here at the next meeting with a new round of comments. We, we, we think it would be appropriate for the same kind of timelines that you've requested of applicants, to be requested of the public, um, to have their comments in advance of the meeting, so that we can have a chance to be fully prepared for that next meeting, answer every concern, and allow that to be the, the full and fair opportunity for the public to be heard, um, and allow us to conclude that process by also being heard. Um, so again, if, unless you'd like anything else from the applicant, um, we thank you for your time tonight and ask you to take those things into consideration when you determine what to do this evening.
Thank you, Joe.
You're on the agenda later.
Well, I, I wondered about that, and you can tell us...
We'll discuss it when we get there.
Right.
But they, they'll be able to present that.
Well, it, as I said, we're here. You let us know if, if that's how it proceeds.
This isn't back and forth.
I know, I know, but 20 seconds. I, I just wanted to say, you, the board knows that, you know, this isn't, this hasn't been a public hearing that's lasted a year because we delayed.
End of story.
And we shouldn't be penalized.
I'm not so sure I agree with that.
All right. That's it. That's it. You're finished. Both of you are finished. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to talk, uh, on the hearing for LP builders? I have a motion to close the hearing on LP builders for tonight. We'll discuss it under the application. Is my continuation? Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I have a motion to open a public hearing on Brooks, uh, two-lot subdivision on Mountain Rest Road. Anybody here wishing to speak on the Brooks two-lot subdivision? Any ones? Any twice? I have a motion to close public hearing on the Brooks two-lot subdivision for tonight.
Motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Next up is, uh, public hearing on, uh, Mohawk Preserve, site plan and subdivision. Have a motion to open a public hearing. Thank you, Lyle.
Second?
Second. Thank God.
How are you?
Aye. Asking you to, um, for the Mohawk Preserve, um, that you limit your time to three minutes. Um, and we'll time it. Uh, we'll try to get you off there in that time. You're allowed to submit written comments at, at any time. Um, to the planning board on it. I would also inform you of the areas that the board will be reviewing, um, tonight, um, as soon as I find it on my pile. Um, which one do we got? Eight?
Seven, nineteen, I don't know, eight.
And eighteen?
Eight. Agricultural Resources and eighteen, maybe eight.
So, um, that's, that's, those are the areas that the board will be reviewing tonight. So we would then ask you to, to address those things and help the board through those things. I'll call your name. I will apologize upfront, because I'll screw up your name somewhere along the line. Um, bear with me. First up is Patty. Give your name and, and address for that we have, we're having this transcribed when you start off.
My name's Patty Madison. My address is 730 Mohawk Road, High Falls, New York, 12440.
Can you do the microphone, please?
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, just get closer to it.
Okay. Okay. Patty Madison. Should I go through the whole thing again?
No.
High Falls.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I have a few comments to make. They're not very complicated. Thank you for listening tonight. Um, I want you to know I'm a native of New Paltz. Uh, my parents brought me to the house on Gate House at Butterville Road when I was born, 62 years ago. Um, so I'm very familiar with the acreage, um, that is under consideration for the Mohawk Preserve Foothills Project. In fact, I know every inch. It was my magic playground and it was the, uh, place of consolation for me from the slings and arrows of ordinary childhood, uh, problems. My parents were both born in New Paltz and lived most of their lives on Butterville Road. Um, to make a full disclosure, I'm part of the Smiley family of the fourth generation, and, uh, I've never had any say whatsoever in any decisions that they have made regarding land or sale or any management aspects of that. That said, I just want everyone to know that I don't find any negative aspects of the Mohawk Preserve's plan for the foothills. And it seems particularly clear to me that the Smiley family members, my grandparents and their nephews, Dan Keith Smiley, who created the Mohawk Preserve 51 years ago, would have also supported the next generation's decision to pass on these acres to the Mohawk Preserve, which, as we all know, is a nonprofit organization continuously focused on land conservation, conservation science, and conservation education. And now that the decision has already been made, the land has been transferred to the Mohawk Preserve, it seems there are some people who find this highly objectionable in the New Paltz community. To them and to the Town Planning Board, I wish that you would think about what might have been the future of these particularly unique, special acres. When I was young, Ulster County was the blue collar population of the Hudson River Valley and including the counties to the north. But many people from New York City and urban areas have moved north, yeah, since the 1980s, 1990s, and in fact, many people after 9/11 have come up out of the urban areas to these wonderful and unique places. Um, and the land values have fluctuated greatly since. In fact, I have no doubt that the 858 acres, uh, that Smiley Brothers sold to the Mohawk Preserve would have been enormously profitable to Smiley Brothers had they decided to sell it for development rather than to a nonprofit land conservation place. Um, I'll try to...
Wrap up?
Wrap up. Right. Um, the point I'm trying to make is that two-thirds of these acres are, uh, are wetlands. One-third, which is 181 acres, uh, would have been, without the town board's parameters, incredibly profitable. If we divide them by four, quarter of an acre, within those acres, we have approximately 750 development lots that could have been for sale. The point I'm trying to make is that, um, who wants that to happen? Who did want that to happen? Smiley's did not want that to happen, and I think that's the bottom line, regardless of any negative aspects that you might make about how the land has been sold and what it's going to be used for. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Jim?
Uh, my name is Jim Longbotham. I'm, uh, resident of 50 Upper 27 Old Row in High Falls. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to speak with you this evening in support of the foothills project that the Mohawk Preserve has proposed. Uh, I'm looking at this project through a variety of lenses. As an outdoor enthusiast, an educator, a former ranger, and... As an outdoor enthusiast, an educator, a former ranger, and camp counselor with the Preserve, scout master for Troop One Seventy-Two, and a twenty-year tenant of spring farm at the crossroads of parking areas, trails, and carriageways, I feel very fortunate to have called this area home since nineteen-eighty-seven. Truly is a gem in the Hudson Valley, a beautiful mosaic of culture with its arts, accessibilities to natural wonders, music, focus on health and well-being, an eclectic blend of businesses, and a thriving university. It was this amazing quality of life and access to nature that drew me here and has fed my soul ever since. Every one of us has a story to tell about our relationship with this area, how we have connected in some way and how we maintain that connection, whether through walking, running, hiking, biking, farming, skiing, rock climbing, or bird watching. As a teacher here in New Paltz, I've had the opportunity to bring my class to the Preserve for the past twenty-three years, weaving this field study experience seamlessly into our curriculum with the amazing support of Kathy Ambrosini, Director of Education at the Preserve, along with her entire staff. The New Paltz schools, as well as surrounding school districts, are truly blessed to have the Mohawk Preserve as a resource for our children. To be witness to children developing a love of nature is an amazing experience. You're seeing a life change before your eyes. Most likely, it is the kindling of a long relationship with their natural environment. Building relationships is crucial in teaching, and it is a challenge in this day and age as people are moving, talking, driving, flying, and busying themselves more and more, becoming disconnected from their natural environment and those around them. We all need opportunities to take time out and slow ourselves. That is when relationships grow stronger. That is when we notice the changing color of a sunset such as last night, or a butterfly emerging from its lace-like chrysalis. I'm excited about the possibilities that the Mohawk Preserve Foothills project brings with it. As an educator, I look forward to the opportunities that the wildlife observation decks, the trails, and the viewing blind near Humpo Marsh will provide. I vividly remember the first time that Dr. Heinz Mang from SUNY New Paltz brought my field biology class to Humpo Marsh. I saw my first green heron that day, and it may have been the very beginning of many students' relationship with nature. The relationships being built here through conservation, environmental education, and public access will last for generations and no doubt span our planet. The Mohawk Preserve Foothills project not only exemplifies the integrity with which the Preserve staff functions, but it symbolizes how important all of our relationships are with our natural environments, with the need that so many of us have to connect with something larger than ourselves. It is a legacy project that we have the chance to be a part of, consistent with our very own community's character. People will have the opportunity to safely park and take time to foster those relationships with each other, the land, and the animals that call it home. Approval of the foothills project is an important decision regarding access to nature, and I would like to provide my wholehearted support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kara?
Hi, Jessica. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name's Kara Lee, and I live at one-thirty-five Huguenot Street. I'm a Senior Conservation Manager with the Nature Conservancy. I'm a resident of New Paltz, of course, and I've been on the New Paltz Open Space Commission for about fifteen years, and I want to offer some comments tonight specifically on the protection of biodiversity resources on the foothills property, because that's on your agenda. So, first, I just want to fill you in on a little background. The Nature Conservancy has worked for over a decade with the Mohawk Preserve as peer members of an organization called the Shangam Ridge Biodiversity Partnership, which was founded in nineteen-ninety-four by the conservation organizations and state agencies dedicated to and responsible for conservation and public access for the almost forty thousand acres of protected lands in the northern Shangams. The mission of the partnership is to work together and with other interested organizations and landowners to maintain and where necessary restore natural communities and native species of the Shangam Mountains. Together, the partnership has conducted a coordinated program of mapping, research, and ecological management to achieve this mission. Within the Shangams, extensive information has been collected on the natural communities and rare species of the gungns, from field studies, historic analyses, mapping, and expertise of the partners. Through an extensive research program, the partnership has analyzed and described the important natural communities of the study area and evaluated how natural and human influences affect these communities, making it possible to design biodiversity protection and management programs for the Shangams that can be implemented by the partners based on the best scientific information available. We've developed guidelines through this process which identified the encroachment of development as the single most significant threat to the integrity of the Shangam Ridge, particularly along the lower slopes. It was identified as potentially causing permanent loss and alteration of natural communities, habitat fragmentation which can create barriers to movement and dispersal of species. Land protection through conservation ownership easements and other land use strategies were identified as a leading means of preventing the impacts associated with development. While some of the parties before you have identified the foothills project as a development project, it is in fact a conservation project of the type and nature envisioned by the partnership as a means of providing landscape and habitat protection while also affording public access. I think other people have raised the point that the New Paltz Open Space Plan also identified this as the most vulnerable property in New Paltz, also with the highest conservation value and a top priority for conservation. So, over the last three years of the land assets management study which the Mohawk Preserve has been conducting, and the more recent studies they have done, the Mohawk Preserve has really used the tools developed and shared by the partnership to conscientiously study and document the sensitive species, habitats, and land uses of the foothills property to provide a science-based approach to the management of these lands. And I'll just mention a few specifics. The wetlands of this property are extensive, include the Humpo Marsh, as well as streams and other wet meadow areas. All the wetland boundaries have been delineated, there are soils, hydrology, and vegetation indicators identified and analyzed in compliance with state and federal, as well as local regulations and permit requirements, and the design reflects that and minimizes well and disturbance. As far as the various plant and animal species, the Mohawk Preserve did an extensive biological inventory in twenty-twelve, and since then, Preserve scientists, volunteer scientists, and trained citizen volunteers have monitored the foothills property, conducting site visits, bio blitzes, bio deckathons, a grassland bird survey, and a breeding bird census. These projects documented all the species found, not just the rare species, and have identified several species and critical habitats that will be protected through the conservation management of the foothills property. There's more I could say about what they found out there, but I just want to say in conclusion that the Mohawk Preserve has done an appropriately extensive and excellent job researching and documenting the ecological resources of the foothills property, and has then used that information to inform the design of trails, access points, and the limited infrastructure proposed, and also importantly, has committed to the long-term monitoring and stewardship of these resources. As a conservation partner, the Nature Conservancy commends the Mohawk Preserve for undertaking this important conservation initiative as another critical step in the preservation of the ecological integrity of the shawangungs. As a resident of New Paltz, I am also grateful to have the scenic and recreational opportunities that this project affords to the whole community. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Lynn Bowdery, Thirty-three Mountain Rest Road, a Preserve research volunteer and also a member of the John Burroughs Natural History Society. And Kara pretty much said most of what I was going to say, but I might add that, ooh, who's that?
Somebody have a heart monitor on, it's beeping.
At any rate, I'll just go on.
Okay.
As a John Burroughs Natural History Society member, I participated not only in the June third, twenty-twelve bio blitz, well before any plans were actually thoroughly developed. They took pains to get good baseline analyses of what they had, and the best I can see comparing the habitat map in the back of the report here, I'm going to give it to Kelly, the whole thing is available, I think digitally somewhere, the findings of the sensitive habitats in the bio blitz of the gateway site closely are reflected in the choices of where things were placed. The Arbuckle Woods, which is the big woodland that you mostly see when you go down two-ninety-nine, has some really wonderful fine white oaks, but there's a patch of scrubby old junipers and pines sort of in the middle, which have very, much less habitat value, and that's where the parking lot was planned. So, a lot of sensitive thought has been given and very well-informed thought on the plans for this project. I've also participated in the bio deckathon, which was really great. We got to hike all over the place, looking everywhere, and trying to compete actually, to find more species than the other groups, but it's been studied up and down, and last summer, I had the pleasure of participating in a breeding bird census over by the edge of the Humpo Marsh between Hasbrook House and the marsh, and it was really quite fascinating to see what birds were breeding, where the cattle were grazing, in a very sort of busy area, and what birds were breeding in the brushy, ignored area. There were two different types of bird species, so the overlaps were hardly existed, and so having the two different types of habitat really increased the biodiversity opportunities for that interesting area. The history of usages and the patchwork of different habitats is a remarkable thing, and the Preserve, from what I can read of its plans, have every intention of preserving that diversity of habitat and biodiversity of plants and animals that really make the area utterly fascinating, and to be able to walk through it easily and have access, more people can appreciate the bobolinks and the meadow larks which aren't up on the mountaintop. They are field birds, and if they're listening, they'll hear all sorts of other things, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Andy Weiss?
Andy Weiss Bartzak, one-forty-two Brunswick Road in Gardner. I wanted to talk about the neighborhood character. I got involved after Open Space Institute bought the eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven acres from the Smiley Brothers because Brook Farm was disappeared by the Open Space Institute. This was a local CSA organic farm. The testimonial gateway was going to be renovated, and as far as I could tell, it was going to leave it as quiet as before, and the neighborhood surrounded, that surrounds this parcel, was going to stay a neighborhood there with a green, quiet landscape. However, the Mohawk Preserve bought not only the landscape around the testimonial gateway, but all of the eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven acres. You can see from the boards that we had done, from the submissions by Mohawk Preserve, that they are going to develop. It may be only two percent, but it's going to be a development of a quiet, green area. There's going to be hundreds of cars in and out, there's going to be trucks pumping what goes down the toilets. So, this is a change in the neighborhood, and I don't think it's for the better. You may call this access, but what it's going to be is a change in that area. Now, I'm just an environmental toxicologist, but this seems like an obvious development, and developments need an environmental impact study when they are going to change the land quite significantly. It's certainly going to change the neighborhood character significantly, both in the neighborhood between Butterville and Route two-ninety-nine, as well as the people who live in the village and the town who depend upon Main Street to get around. I have to come up Libertyville and make a right turn onto two-ninety-nine to get into the village, and I've heard from people that when you come east on two-ninety-nine, they dread the Libertyville intersection because people just come out, they get tired of waiting for the traffic now. So, this is going to change the neighborhood character, not just of the neighborhood directly around this development, but it's going to change the town and the village because of the greater difficulty in getting around the town and the village because of the ninety spaces, which will mean several hundred cars each day, weekends, holidays, leap peeping, and who knows what else. Mohawk Preserve wants this as a major tourist attraction. That doesn't mean that we local people are going to be going there, it means they're going to get people from outside here, the city, who knows where else, are going to come here. So, of course, it's going to change the character of this area. So, that's why I'm asking for an environmental impact study, so that we can find out exactly how it's going to change the area and think about all the details.
Thank you. Joe Bridges?
My name is Joe Bridges. I am a resident of the town of Asopus and have been rock climbing, hiking, and exploring the lands of the Mohawk Preserve for the past forty-five years. I have been a research associate at the Preserve for the past seventeen years, and senior biologist for Matthew D. Rudikoff Associates, an environmental planning and consulting firm, for the past twenty-five years. I hold a PhD in Biology from Columbia University, and I wish to speak in support of the foothills project. I am intimately familiar with the habitats of the foothill property and their component flora and fauna, having helped to organize and participate in two biodiversities surveys there. Specifically, the two thousand twelve bio blitz held on June second at the testimonial gateway property, and the two thousand thirteen Humpo Marsh Bio Deckathon, ten days of field exploration conducted at the Hasbrook House, Humpo Marsh property. Each of these biodiversity surveys engaged the expertise of more than a dozen field biologists and experienced naturalists, some of whom were Preserve scientists and educators, all highly knowledgeable in one or more aspects of the regional flora and fauna. Although parking was limited and visitors had to park in an open field, about sixty people stopped by the gateway property throughout the day to join a survey group. At the end of the day, the tally of observed species at the gateway property was five-hundred-and-seven, including three-hundred-and-twenty-five species of plants and a hundred-and-seventy-two species of animals. I'm going to pass over some of the noteworthy findings of that survey because they will be in my comments, and they are a matter of record at the Mohawk Preserve. But what really sticks in my mind from that day is the enthusiasm and expression of wonder I saw in a young girl's face when she was shown a large spotted salamander for the first time, a chunky, seven-inch-long, seemingly smiling, harmless amphibian. In two thousand thirteen, the public was invited to attend two of the ten- In 2013, the public was invited to attend two of the 10 biodiversity surveys conducted at the Hasbrook House Humpo Marsh site. Approximately 30 members of the public attended these surveys, whose number was limited largely by the small, rutted parking area near the Hasbrook House. Toward the end of the growing season, the species tally for the Hasbrook House Humpo Marsh site was 512 and included 345 species of plants and 167 species of animals. I'm also going to pass over the noteworthy findings from that biodiversity survey, as they will be in my comments and is a matter of record for the Mohawk Preserve. It is clear to me, however, that, and to many others, that the scope of biodiversity recorded by Preserve scientists and educators offers much raw material and enormous potential for environmental education opportunities at many levels, as well as opportunities for passive recreation, citizen science projects, and more formal scientific research. It was also clear during participation in the biodiversity surveys that parking at the Foothills was very limited and potentially unsafe. Consequently, in order for the Preserve to take advantage of the many opportunities for expanded engagement with the public at the Foothills, it would be necessary to provide appropriately sized areas of safe, protected public parking. It has been noted that of the approximate 837 acres of the Foothills property, only 6.5 acres of relatively low-value habitats are proposed to be disturbed. And of that disturbance, only 1.1 acres of impervious surface are proposed for the construction of driveways, parking areas, and small structures. The total area of proposed disturbance at the Foothills represents 0.8% of the property, and of that, the amount of proposed new impervious surface, 0.1%. Consequently, 99.2% of the natural habitats and cultural landscapes of the Foothills will not be disturbed and will be protected and conservatively utilized for public programs. The limited extent of proposed development at the Foothills will assure the preservation of community character and will be fully compatible with the Town of New Paltz 2006 Open Space Plan, in that more than 500 acres of cultural landscapes, the Humpo Marsh, and forested areas of the Foothills property along the Route 299 corridor will be protected and conserved by the Mohawk Preserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for benefit of everybody, if you have written comments, you can drop them off with Kelly. I'd ask you to summarize what's in the written comments. The board will again opportunity to read your written comments. There'll be a matter of record on it. But in order to move the meeting along, we ask you to try to keep it down to three minutes and submit the written comments if you have them. Next up, Matt Logan.
Matt Logan, 10 Lincoln Place, New Paltz, 1256. I'm here tonight as a board member of the Gums Climbers Coalition. Rock climbers have been drawn to our Shuangunkh Bridge line since 1935. For decades, the Smiley family has welcomed me and accommodated to us as we fit their philosophy of encouraging physical, mental, and spiritual well-being through intimate contact with nature. Decades ago now, the Mohawk Preserve was created and took over stewardship and management of this unique resource. In 2002, as climbers swelled in numbers, the Gums Climbers Coalition was formed by local climbers enthusiastic to work with the Preserve to help ensure continuing balance of access and preservation be maintained in light of the evolution and growth of the climbing community. GCC has grown itself to almost 300 active members, who give not only their money in the form of dues and fees, but often volunteer themselves their time and labor towards this shared project with the Preserve. We and the GCC Board of Directors are not just representative members of the climbing community, but also work and live in New Paltz and the surrounding townships. We're both board members representing our particular outdoor pursuit and citizens representing our larger social quality of life and economic interests. We count ourselves incredibly lucky that the ridges and surrounding slopes, valleys and foothills are managed by the Preserve with both the expansive vision and intense intention to detail necessary to striking a balance between recreational access and environmental preservation. This is no easy job, and the Preserve's laudatory stewardship over the years speaks for itself. That the Preserve is now extending its efforts really for the first time into the town of New Paltz is a welcome development. The gateway and the foothills are both a connection to and a buffer for the ridge itself. The Preserve's plans to balance access to and preservation of these landscapes are indicative of all we have come to expect of this excellent organization from their past performance. Well-studied, well-thought-out, well-designed, and soon after thorough review by this planning board to be well-executed and operated far into the future. We of the GCC Board of Directors believe the physical, mental, spiritual, and yes, economic well-being of our community is intrinsically and happily tied to the mission of the Mohawk Preserve. And we encourage this planning board to do everything in its power to encourage and expedite the plans before it.
Thank you.
That's it.
Keep it brief.
Good evening, chairman, board members, and the public. I don't have a prepared statement, but you know me, I come up here and I just wait to see where this is going, and I kind of fill in blanks. Anyway, excuse me?
Did you say your name?
Oh, yeah, Tom Corrado. I thought you know by now.
Well, I'm proud of you, yeah.
I'm vice chairman of the Putnam Valley Planning Board, I'm a life member of the Mohawk Preserve.
Please, to the left, please.
Okay, I'll sync if you'd like. So, anyway, my background, my primary concern is I have strong environmental background, environmental concerns. I've been in environmental initiatives from coast to coast, and I wish I had time to sit down with any one of you and tell you about some of those adventures. But right now, I'm kind of talking to you from a planning board member, because I usually sit on that side. And I know that decisions you have to make are usually confined to everything that's within your purview as a board member, and that's predicated by what's in the town code. With that said, I come here month after month for this public hearing process. I've read every stitch of information that this applicant has put forward, and I've never had the opportunity in my planning capacity to ever see anything that extensive. What I don't understand, and month after month, the end of this public hearing, you close the public hearing, and everyone from the concerned citizens stand up and they walk out before you're ready to discuss any of the components of that application. And a couple times I've asked, I said, "Where's everybody going? This is the part you should be sitting here for. This is what you write letters to the editor saying that this applicant is not providing." But yet, they get up and they walk out the door. So, keep that in mind while you're sitting here making your decision. The people who are really concerned are the people, the educators, PhDs, everybody get up and talk in a positive way at the Mohawk Preserve and this application. So, you know, I'm not here to disparage anyone, but when I look over here at the distortions and the size of buildings that lack scale, and then I look over here at a planner, architectural planner, landscape architect, surveyors, and everybody, and all the ingredients that went to those drawings there that are pretty accurate renditions of what's going to happen, as opposed to those distortions which are just aimed at confusing the public. I just hope everybody understands what's going on here. I really do. It's unfortunate. And I travel 50 miles to 60 miles just to give you my little piece each month because I respect everything the Mohawk Preserve has done. Mohawk Preserve's performance to date has been spectacular. The things that they do for educating children, the programs that go on there, it's endless.
Tom, you want to wrap up?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I'll stop, and I'll give any few seconds to the senator from wherever.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom. Same rule for you.
It seems that there's a lot more to be said about the issue of agricultural resources and the impact that's potentially likely to arise from the going forward of the Mohawk Preserve's proposed Foothills project. And that's really what I want to address, or at least one aspect of it. And for that, some of you in the audience here will hopefully recall that over the past few years, there had been an emerging issue arising from the Brook Farm project, or just plain Brook Farm, because a lot of folks in the community, about 90 or so families, give or take a few, but about 90 families were relying on the Brook Farm as the source for their organic produce. As a matter of fact, the quality of the produce was sufficiently high to lead even the Mohawk Mountain House, nationally recognized and distinguished, justifiably so, for gourmet dining. And the Mohawk Mountain House was actually utilizing produce from the Brook Farm. Now, what does that have to do with agricultural resources coming up through and including the present time? Well, the answer is that the Glenwood Center, at that time holding the lease for Brook Farm, decided to evict Brook Farm. And many of us, myself included, both with what eventually became citizens of the Shuangkhs and other community members, repeatedly tried to find out from Glenwood Center, from the Open Space Institute, from the Mohawk Preserve itself, just what in the world was going on. What was the foundation, the justification to evict a community farm, a legitimate CSA farm, when the community here in New Paltz and in the envirining towns such as Gardner were increasingly showing an active interest in vegetarian food, veganism, and the health food stores were responding to that need, and so were the supermarkets even to this very moment. The supermarkets, ShopRite, and others are trying to figure out how to have more shelf space for organic produce because that's what folks in this community are actively interested in. Now, it's true nowadays, there is the Phillies Bridge Farm, and that's a very good thing to have. But the point is, we don't need just one CSA. We need more than that. We need lots of them because they not only provide for organic produce, but they also help to generate a lot of the community solidarity and communication that's all too often forgotten in our era of alienation. And certainly, Brook Farm, from the times I was there doing just some field work and sociological observations about it, it was impressive to me how folks at the farm talked about all kinds of matters having to do with community politics, environmental issues, and the like. So, it's quite ironic, and I think a cause for profound concern, that when the Brook Farm project was evicted by Glenwood, under the auspices, actually, of the Open Space Institute and the Mohawk Preserve, the justification was, "Well, you know, the lease is up." Now, what in the world kind of rationale is that for an environmental organization such as the Mohawk Preserve? At any time they wanted to, then or now, it could have been easily dealt with by exercising perfectly reasonable discretion and continuing the lease and making arrangements for the Brook Farm operation to continue. Again, we don't need just one CSA in this region. We need lots of them.
Erwin, you want to wrap up?
Yeah. Last but not least, I want to just conclude that the reason that it's so important to have an environmental impact statement is that there's a kind of a foggy notion here that somehow if we love the mountain, or if we love the Mohawk Preserve, or both, it therefore follows that this is why there should be no environmental impact statement, when in fact, as Ronald Reagan once said it, "Trust is a great thing, but you verify." And while I may not agree with a whole lot of what that president said, that's very important, and especially in connection with verifying things. I want everybody to take note of the fact that none of the pictures you see on the Mohawk Preserve side indicate before pictures, to indicate the vast amount of terrain that's really being taken away, including resources that could be used, say, for agriculture, whereas the pictures on our side, and they are all architectural renditions or schematics, they are all very important points of distinction. Ask why the Mohawk Preserve fails to present before pictures.
Thank you, Erwin. Right out, that's it. James Byer?
Hello, my name is James Byer. I'm a student at New Paltz, and I live on 54 North Chestnut. And I'm here to present a letter by Kara Ritzma, Professor Emeris at New Paltz. But I also just want to talk about my personal experience with this exact land, actually. I had the really lucky experience to perform two studies on this land, one with Professor Keeling that looked into emerald ash core activity on the site, and one doing a grassland bird study. I don't know if you guys have ever gone verdict, but waking up at 4:30 is hard enough, so when you have to wake up at 4:30, then like park on the side of the road and like fall out of your car into some bushes, it's like a lot less pleasant than like getting into like a nice parking lot. So that's my, that's my two cents on why I think the parking lot part would be nice. The main goal here is, to summarize the points of this letter, and it basically just goes into saying that it's really important for the education of the local students. It's located on a large, undisturbed area of white oak trees that are basically, a lot of the research at New Paltz is done on, at least with Dr. Keeling, is done on oak stands because it's kind of an interesting species that is not a lot of other places, or it's at least harder to find. So it'd be a good candidate for that kind of research. And then, another thing that I can personally say is that when you have a lab that's like three hours, if like you have to spend 30 minutes, like you're driving way outside of New Paltz to go somewhere, then you're losing an hour worth of time because you have to get there and back, and you know, you have like some BS, like sociology class after that or something, so you got to get to that and then get back. So, I don't know, that's my two cents. But if you had an area that was closer, like it's probably like a 10-minute drive like to the Foothills area from the college, it would really increase the amount of time you could spend out there doing field work, which is the point. And she wants me to talk a little bit about how there's a long-term data set on the area that's collected by the Daniel Smiley Research Center, and that's of critical importance to the local area. I mean, a lot of scientists would die to get that data. It's like 150 years old in some cases. It's really good, high-quality data. There's a phenology project going on there now, and I just don't want to read the whole letter because I know you're going to look at it later. So that's my two cents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate it. Peter Cody?
I wrote my glasses today. I'm Peter Cody. I first came to this area 30-some years ago as a climber and have made it my home since then. Reading this letter on behalf of Christian Brackia. Dear members of the planning board, I would like to submit this letter in support of the Mohawk Preserve's plan to manage the property referred to as the Foothills Zone. I am a new business owner based in Gardner, but I am also a local of 12 years and have been visiting the ridge as a climber since 1986. I would like to start by saying that I feel the greatest asset our region possesses is the land and unique ecosystem that surrounds the Shuangunkh Ridge. The economic... The economic activity, recreational value, and biodiversity of flora and fauna only exist as the result of the preservation of the lands of the Shuangunk Ridge. The Mohawk Preserve, since its inception in 1978, has protected and maintained these lands so that they may be used, but not abused. Maintaining the trail systems, allowing various recreational opportunities to take place, while limiting high-impact activities, has allowed the area to maintain its natural state. The region is an attractive place to visit and live, because the Mohawk Preserve has maintained the value of the land by managing to strike a balance between use and preservation. The tourists and residents that spend time on the ridge are more physically fit and have a connection to nature. This is a further benefit of driving demand for unique businesses that mimic the biodiversity found on the ridge. In our area, the local artists, farmers, builders, and restaurateurs are individuals creating rare and unique commodities that further add value to the area. Each spin-off and added benefit in our area depends on the one thing that needs proper management, the land itself. I feel strongly that the preservation track record of the Mohawk Preserve speaks for itself. The Preserve has shown through example how an organization can protect an area while simultaneously inspiring its visitors to limit their own impact, and in many cases to become caretakers or volunteers themselves. It is for this reason that I feel confident in the plans laid out by the Mohawk Preserve to maintain and protect the Foothill Zone. The management model takes into account the changes in growth that are affecting the region. I believe the plans laid out are in the best interest of the residents, visitors, and most importantly, the species that inhabit the land surrounding the Shuangunk Ridge. I urge the board to take action to help enable this plan to move forward. Sincerely, Christian Fracchia. If I could just say a couple of sentences of my own, the, I was sort of jotting this stuff down as I listened, but Joe Bridges spoke of developing like 0.8%, I believe, to build parking lots, and it just seems that the accessibility that that would open up to the New Paltz community would be enormous to have that. And I haven't heard that spoken of as much, but just for the New Paltz community to be able to go over there, I mean, it's like right over the river, and have access to this land, I know my own access, what it's done to my life has just been huge, so I think that's a big deal, actually, great value.
Thank you, Peter. Larry?
I have a copy for each of you, I'll try to draw this down. I'm Larry Badenough, I live at Seven Calvin Boulevard. Those of you who don't know it, it's off Mountain Rest. It took my wife and I a year and a half to find our dream house. Our back lot goes down to a stone wall, and then the Kleinikil runs through, it's the wetlands behind that, so we have a total view of the mountain, and we've been here about thirty years, and no one could be a more enthusiastic lover and appreciator of both the mountain house and the preserve. And we think of ourselves as concerned with not attacking the preserve, but preserving the preserve. Summarize our position, which we've said a number of times, and that is, regarding the size and complexity of this project, a Type 1 action, we urge the Planning Board to require a full environmental impact statement, so that the residents of the town and town officials can have the potential consequences of this development of the foothills, as proposed by the applicant, assessed in a comprehensive manner by an independent third-party consultant. The issues the Planning Board is considering tonight include: impact of the proposed project on the plant and animal life of the project area, and a concern is that funneling so many people through the small space to the gatehouse area, okay, can have a negative impact, with greater traffic, even roadkill is likely to increase. Two, impact on agricultural resources of the project area. We've witnessed the closing of Brook Farm, and I'd like to say again about the citizens, we are all users of it, we're all appreciators of it, we're glad for its educational value, we have no complaint with that. Three, impacts on public services such as police, fire, and emergency services. With the addition of thousands of visitors to the testimonial gatehouse and surrounding areas, there's an inevitable increase in demand for these public services. There is a contradiction, the applicant's claim to be a private landowner but having no requirement to pay its fair share for required essential public services. Finally, the issue of impact on community character is especially relevant. A pertinent example of this impact is the recent erection of fencing undertaken by Mohawk Preserve and its close affiliate OSI of the Open Space along Butterville, Springtown Road, and 299. Has this fencing of what was heretofore open space with broad vistas of the Shuangunks had a negative impact on the open space community character in New Paltz? Has the town of New Paltz ever felt the need to erect fencing around the open space owned by the town? In conclusion, we ask whether the lyrics of Joni Mitchell's ballad "Yellow Taxi" are prophetic of the impact that this development is likely to have on the town and people of New Paltz. When I can't get my way with my family, I threaten to take up singing, so I won't do this, but anyway, words, "They paved paradise and put up a parking lot, doesn't always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone?" Doesn't always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone? For these and all of the aforementioned reasons that we have presented to this Planning Board since early 2014, we urge the Planning Board to require a comprehensive EIS of both the Mohawk Preserve's applications. Respectfully submitted, Lawrence Badenough, Chairman, Citizens of the Shuangunk Incorporated.
Thank you. Michael Cherry?
Hi, I'm Michael Cherry, 180 Horstington Road. Basically, I came up here today to just say I support the project. In listening to people speak, I've been here, coming up here for thirty-five years, in that thirty-five years, there's, New Paltz has changed, there's been growth, we tend to think of things in short amounts of time. In fifty years, I'm sure there'll be a lot more people here. I think the Preserve has acted as a wonderful steward of the land, and I think any project has to look forward to how increasing population is going to affect the area, and how stewardship can alleviate some of the distinct problems that will occur because of population. In listening to the pros and cons and reading about the project, any project, any change has pros and cons, I believe that for the community as a whole, and the larger community, that the project offers compelling benefits, especially looking up ten, twenty, thirty years, and that's why I support it.
Kara?
Hi there, I want to just talk about one small difference of perspective, you've heard a little bit from one of my students, James, Kara Valinsky, 47 Elting Avenue. I'm a professor of biology at SUNY New Paltz, I'm relatively new to the area and new faculty, and I've just started teaching ornithology for the second time this year, after it's been gone for several years since my predecessor retired. And what I want to let you know tonight is that I'm here to express my support for the project from my perspective as an ecologist, and also as a biology professor. When I teach ornithology, I'm always looking for new places to bring my students, and I'm looking for places where we can see a variety of habitats and lots of species. And a couple of habitats that we haven't really been able to access easily are marshes and farm fields, and I'm looking for safe parking. I have to drive a fifteen-passenger van, not my favorite activity, but I want to get my students there safely, and I've had a couple of not-as-comfortable experiences parking that van in the tiny little parking lot next to the gateway, so I would prefer not to have to do that. We've had lots of fantastic trips to Mohawk Preserve, up and down the ridge, but I could really use better access to some of these foothill locations. While I'm generally not a fan of parking lots, I think that they're worth it when they expand access to the outdoors, especially for community members, including students. I feel like part of my job is to bring students out and show them this area, a lot of them are coming from other areas, and a lot of our students are from urban centers around New York City. If we don't get people like this out into nature, we're not going to have nature in twenty, forty, fifty, a hundred years from now, so it's really important for our students to be able to see this. I'm always surprised at how few students have actually been up onto the ridge, some of them just don't know about it, they see it, but they don't know how to get there, they don't have cars necessarily, and some of them can't pay for the passes. Because SUNY New Paltz has an institutional agreement with Mohawk Preserve, I get to take them there for free, and I would like to be able to do so to all of the different areas to access, and I'd really appreciate better access to the lower foothills area because it's so close to campus, and because the habitats are different. So I guess I'll just sum this up, the Foothill Project is good for my students, and as a resident of the village, I think the project is good for residents. I don't want to see it held up by the time and cost of doing more environmental impact statements, this is a conservation project after all, and one that's being proposed by a local conservation organization that has done beautiful and environmentally sensitive development in our community before. I trust Mohawk Preserve to get this right, it benefits them and it benefits us to allow this small amount of development in the service for allowing better access to lands that are being preserved.
Thank you, Kara. Seth?
Hi, I'm Seth McKee, I'm a resident of 23 Dusene Road for the past twenty years, and I want to talk about community character in a couple of ways, notably trailheads, parking areas, and the New Paltz Open Space Plan. I remember the days before the Trapps Parking Lot was built, and 4455 was overrun with cars and people getting out of their cars and swinging their car doors out, there was a traffic hazard, the Mohawk Preserve responded, created a trailhead that has improved the quality of life for motorists and residents in the area. Mohawk currently has 440 parking spaces at trailheads, which accesses eighty-five hundred acres and eighty miles of trails and carriage roads. The visitor's center at the Mohawk Preserve has 200 parking spaces. We're talking about ninety parking spaces at the gateway, so it's less than half of the size of what's available at the visitor's center. The West Trapps Parking Lot that I just mentioned has 130 spaces. You barely even know it's there when you drive by, it's tucked away, as the plans show this will be tucked away. Spring Farm has 70 parking spaces. Spring Farm has 70 parking spaces? I was surprised to see that, because when I go to Spring Farm, it doesn't feel like a massive development, doesn't feel like a Walmart parking lot or anything like that. This is slightly larger than that. Split Rock has 40 parking spaces. None of these are in New Paltz, they're all in Gardner and Marble Town. So the testimonial gateway parking area is smaller than the West Trapps by one-third, it's 56% of the size of the visitor's center, and it's 29% larger than Spring Farm. I think it's important for everyone to recognize what we're talking about, and look at what's there now, and then size it in your minds accordingly, and I think for the Planning Board as well. The Humpo Marsh proposed parking area is 23 spaces, that's a little more than half the size of the Coxinkil Trailhead, half the size of the Coxinkil Trailhead. I can count on one hand, I think, the number of times I've gotten a parking space at Coxinkil, because it's not that big. So, if this is approved, it'll be 553 spaces for all of Mohawk Preserve, it's a 25% increase overall for what's there now. I want to talk about the New Paltz Open Space Plan as well, which implements the priority rec, this project implements priority recommendations of the New Paltz Open Space Plan, which was passed in 2006. I was a member, I'm still a member of the New Paltz Open Space Commission, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. The plan called for the protection of at least 500 acres of this exact landscape, and it identified it. We had public meetings where 150 people showed up, and people took a vote, they took out maps and marked up on maps the most important landscapes in the town of New Paltz that they thought were worth conserving, and this was the top one, the Mohawk Foothills was the top one, because back in 2005, 2006, in the go-go real estate market, everyone was wondering, what's going to happen to this? If the Smilys could have sold this, it would have been Toll Brothers, and there would have been houses as far as you can see, with car doors slamming and radios blaring and all those detriments to community character. Instead, we're going to have a trailhead, and I was just up at the Trapps Trailhead this weekend, and I was noticing, most people, they get to the trailhead, they get out of their car, they stretch out, they suit up, and they go. They come back, they stretch out, they get in their cars, and they leave. There's no tailgate parties, there's not a lot of raucous behavior, people are pretty much there, they want to get into the land, and then they want to go home. So I think we can expect something similar here. I'll note that 68% of New Paltz residents voters approve that plan, the 2006 Open Space Plan, which identified the conservation of this landscape as a top priority. So, this project is about a lot more than the trailheads, it's about conservation of this landscape that everyone's been talking about. Proposed parking, it's really appropriately sited and scaled to allow a reasonable amount of visitors to enjoy the site, and I think notably also for community character, residents of the village, those students that were mentioned, the SUNY students who've never been to the ridge because they don't know how to get there, they can take their bicycles or they can walk to this trailhead, it's that much closer to the village. This will enhance the community character of New Paltz. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you all for being so patient. I hope this is the last time I have to come back, and I will try to say only new things tonight. We're here to talk about the impact of the Foothill Project on community character, so it's important to think about, is this project consistent with our zoning, with our farmland preservation plan, our desire to reduce harmful economic impacts, preservation of the historic free use of private property, protection of our historic structures and scenic landscapes, protection of wildlife, the negative community character problem of lack of parking, and, okay, so under current zoning, as Patty Madison said earlier, we're in the A3 zone, I came out with the calculation that over 200 houses are permitted under current zoning in that area. So that would have been about five miles of paved road, drainage infrastructure, I don't know, municipal sewage system, so all of that would have been given to the New Paltz taxpayers for perpetual maintenance. So that's what zoning would have permitted. Instead, we're going to see a use of less than 1% of the land, no new children entering our schools, so that's, I think we just have to remember, what could we have been looking at under zoning? Is the project consistent with our farmland protection plan? Yes, which permits fencing, even if it's ugly, because farmers need to keep people out of their crops. I also need to point out that I was a member of Brook Farm, we had a year's notice that the lease was up, and I'm sorry that some people didn't read the monthly bulletins. Will the project cause harmful economic impacts? No, taxpayers will never have to pay the increases associated with the subdivision, and our local businesses will enjoy a $7 return on investment. So for every dollar that's spent on investment, Open Space actually yields the highest business return on investment, and we get that data from the Trust for Public Land, which was the organization that helped our community purchase the Walker Valley Rail Trail, so we go way back with that. As you heard last month, there were no police calls from the Preserve last year, so no negative impact there. We have a little bit of a sort of community fondness for remembrance of our ability to trespass on private property. We all went out and skated on that foothills, on the wetlands, we roamed up the LA. We roamed up the LA. I would like to say that most of us weren't aware that we were trespassing on Mohawk Mountain House property, but now we know that we were. And yes, those days are over. Being able to legally trespass or illegally trespass on Mountain House property, that is a part of community character that is gone forever. When we talk about the historic nature of our community, I can't think of anything more iconic than the testimonial gateway. And it is deteriorating every year that we sit here and ponder whether or not anything that the preserve is presenting to you meets any possible threshold for an EIS. And of course, it doesn't. None of this comes anywhere near a threshold. We have CVS, we have Wildberry, we have a multi condo project in the village, all of which exceed zoning by about 1,000%. Those are thresholds that might require an EIS. There is nothing that is going on in this plan that begins to rise to the threshold of needing an EIS. So, the preserve has already missed several funding cycles for the Office of Recreation and Historic Preservation to get the funding to begin repairs to our gatehouse. So yes, this project will preserve our community's reverence for our history. Let's please get on with it, since now the gatehouse will face the associated damage that another winter will bring. Will the project protect our view of the Shangam Ridge? Yes. Will the project protect wildlife? Turtle crossings? Check. Elevated walking paths that don't inhibit wildlife migration? Check. 50 years of wildlife forest and meadow habitat management? Check. I'm glad that this is now a question that the planning board asks applicants, and I look forward to hearing the answers from CVS and Wildberry when we hear their wildlife management plans. Will the project add additional parking to alleviate parking problems? Yes. And finally, despite what I consider to be the bogus complaints, you've heard about the traffic, wildlife, and harm to the environment, what people don't like about this project is the fact that zoning permits it. So if people don't like our zoning, the place to complain is not here, but join our master plan committee. And, you know, if you want to ask your neighbors for 5, 10, 15 acre zoning west of the Walk Hill, feel free to do it. But what we have right now is the best possible gift that our community could receive, and that is Mohawk Foothills Project. Let's get on with it.
Thank you, Kitty. Ron?
I'm going to start off talking about the nude I saw the other day. I'm kidding. But we heard about the boblink, the green heroin, not heroin, the green heron. Is this on film? But seriously, this is not, everybody loves Mohawk, the preserve. This is not Walden Pond we're talking about, what they're trying to set up here. Okay? It's good that everyone talks about nature. Who doesn't love nature? Who doesn't love the beauty of Mohawk? But we're not, it's just not the zoning, Kitty. It's, we want some guarantees too. If this thing was five miles away, there wouldn't be a lot of people, five miles away from New Paltz, wouldn't be a lot of people talking about this and protesting it so much. It's a mile and a half from the town. Give us some guarantees that 299 is not going to be blocked like Minnewaska is. Give us some guarantees about that. Give us some guarantees there's not going to be increased traffic of up to maybe 500 cars on a weekend. You talk about 90 cars parking there. There's 90 cars, right. But they go in and out, like the guy said, you go in, you visit, you walk around. And how many short-term visitors are you going to get up there who say, hey, you know, Mom, Dad, you're visiting me in college, hey, let's go up here, it's a mile and a half way, take a look? You know, it's in and out, in and out traffic. That is not a safe place either. You have room for maybe eight cars to make a right-hand turn into that entrance there. If you figure it out, you've got 200 feet of space, I think they set up on the plans. You know, what do you get to the ninth car? The ninth car's stuck in there? What if you've got two buses, and you've got seven cars one day, everyone wants to get up there? You blocking 299 now? It's a valid, we have valid concerns here. We're not one of these, we're not NIMBYs walking around saying, we're not anti-nature. Most of us are preserve members, mountain climbers, a lot of us do a lot of things. Okay? We love boblinks, you know, green herons. But guarantee us, there's not going to be increased accidents there from people flying when the Springtown Road is, Spring Farm, Springtown Road is blocked, and everybody flies because they're all late to work, and they go down that highway, that road there. Tell me there's not going to be increased, guarantee that to me. Guarantee there's not going to be interfering lights one day there, flashing lights, making sure that cars slow down. More signage. Guarantee me there's not going to be signage in the areas we live in too, saying, no parking, no parking, and following state mandates that require parking signs to be every 200 meters or something like that. We're talking about signs, and I'm not going to sing this song about signs, signs everywhere, signs. Guarantee me there's going to be no loudspeakers. Guarantee me there's going to be no musical gatherings and loud sound systems. We're already looking at the, guarantee there's not going to be any traffic lights, there's going to be demand for traffic lights there. Guarantee there's not going to be nighttime lights there. Okay? That's going to impact the beautiful nightscape we have in this community that Mohawk loves and we all love. No flashing lights. Guarantee there's no, I already covered this, no nightlights. Tell me there's not going to be bikes, skis, snowshoe rentals. Tell me that's not going to happen. And I'm almost done. It seems disingenuous also to compare the trailheads with like how easy it is to get in, you get out, it's wonderful. This is a mile and a half from New Paltz. Okay? We're talking about traffic that impacts everybody. Humpo Marsh, you want to put 100 spots over there? Fine. It's like off the beaten path, you've got a lot of room there. And develop Humpo Marsh. It's a marsh, maybe you can't do that. The boblinks. But anyway, no, not the boblinks, right? But it's great, you've got 500 acres that you're preserving, and you cite the number of 0.01% of the land. Who cares if it's 0.01%? If you're jamming 90 cars in there and 500, 600 cars coming out every day? That's the problem. That's the problem.
Ron, you want to wrap up?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I still had more to say. Now, that's about it, and for the bird lady from New Paltz, you can see a lot of birds at gatehouse. You won't be able to see birds at gatehouse once they develop that, but you can go up and down Pine Road. And I love what Mohawk's doing. They're doing, I'm not happy about the fencing that they put in on gatehouse, and let me tell you, that doesn't take into consideration the deer that traverse the roads too, so. Anyway, have a nice day, good luck, guys.
Veronica?
Good evening. Veronica Ruoff, no, sorry. 3177 Route 4455 in Gardner. And I just wanted to say a few things on behalf of the Shiwango Nordic Ski Association on the Board of Directors, and I wanted to speak in support of the extended trail system that reaches from town and up into the foothills. As cross-country skiers, we're extremely grateful for the expanded grooming this past winter, and we hope that the grooming will continue. It's been great for our community. It's amazing access. It helps to promote a culture of healthy living, and that, you know, that's without a doubt an asset to our community's character. I know that closer access to the trails has also been, and will continue to be, great for the local high school kids. I've seen both New Paltz High School and Walk Hill out skiing over the winter. And in general, skiing is such a healthy outdoor activity that I think it's really beneficial to raise awareness simply by skiing with an eyesight of passersby. So many people have contacted our group to say things along the lines of, I haven't skied in years, and I didn't even realize it was possible here, and I saw people out there doing it in the field, and that's so cool. And people are just excited when they see people skiing out in the field. On a final note, in the case of the foothills, ski grooming doesn't require any changes to the current landscape. It's merely on the surface of the snow. So we're really hopeful that Mohawk Preserve will be permitted to continue these grooming efforts and keep the momentum going that everyone's so excited about for the upcoming season. In fact, improved ski conditions and this expanded trail system that leads directly from town into the mountains, which is such a rare thing that, you know, we feel really blessed to have in our neighborhood. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Ron. Lou?
Luke Carriola, 6 Jacobs Lane. And this gentleman was talking about it being a mile and a half. I'm 50 feet from the project area. My concern about the parking area is mainly that it comes out onto 299. But what I'd like to follow up on was the last meeting talking about runoff. I've been assured that, and have seen the plans, that the parking area will have buffers for the sheet water running down, such as filter strips, rain gutters, dry swale, bio-retention areas. That's fine. This area where the gatehouse is, is in a residential area. As far as I know, the other trailheads are primarily more wooded areas. And what I'm concerned about is the maintenance of these buffers. I'm told it will be maintained, but again, this is a residential area, I live on Jacobs Lane. There's a natural runoff that exists now from the Mohawk plan. There's one that goes through Lot 1, Jacob Lane properties. One, Jacobs Lane, two, four, six, and seven. I'm on six. We accept the existing runoff now. I mentioned last meeting, I've got to redo the stream that comes from Mohawk on my property. I accept that, my neighbor accepts what's there. But again, I'm concerned about additional runoff. The plan may work now, but if it's not maintained, all these various filter systems, then who do I go to? I know Mohawk is responsible, but I'd like to have, or I don't know, maybe in the plan already, giving the additional stamp that would be needed to maintain these buffer Again, I think it's a great project. I'm not opposed to it. I'm opposed to where driveways, and just concerned about the buffers.
Thank you. Thank you, Lou. Mark?
My name is Mark Ruoff, also of 3177 Route 4455. And my wife Veronica just spoke, newlywed, and she's still getting to know the last name, so. We, I think, at our address, we are the closest neighbors to the Mohawk Preserve's headquarters. And I've already written to the planning board to comment on this, but just want to reiterate here, I have not had negative experiences there. So I'm not a predictor of the future on the new proposed parking lot, but for whatever it's worth, my experience has been a great one, good one. It's been easy living there, and the preserve is an easy neighbor for me, so that I can attest, as per my own experience. So I'll leave that part at that. Like Veronica, I'm also here to comment on cross-country skiing, which seems sort of like a narrow scoped topic, but in my own life, it's been a transformative component. And all my skiing has begun here on the trails of the preserve. Skied with your son in high school. We spent many hours, at this point I've spent thousands of hours of my life on the preserve's lands. And I'm currently coaching now with the New Paltz High School team. Today, just today, we ran up Lenape Lane, and we had about 35 kids there. The school has a great relationship with the Mohawk Preserve. So 35 kids get dropped off, we do a hard workout up Lenape Lane, and as we're running back down, one of the kids is talking to me about how much he loves being on this team because they get to go up to the mountain, and they get to be on these trails. And so I guess I'm pointing to the community character topic tonight with this, and saying, 25 years ago, that was my experience being on the New Paltz High School ski team, loving the opportunity to be up on these mountains. And to hear this young man say it today, he's like, that's why. My parents really never got into it. He said, but I joined the team, and I'm up here, and it's, he loves it. He loves being out in nature, he loves the perspective on the land, and he has an environmental excitement about it, you know, he loves the landscape. As skiers, we're excited to see prospective trail coming from town, and there aren't many towns in the country that have a trail that comes to your doorstep of a village. There are a few that I can think of, I got to travel fairly widely when I was involved in the sport competitively, and there are really only two towns that come to mind, there may be some more that I missed, but there aren't many places that have a trail come to your doorstep where the community can partake. And in that sense, I think it's extremely special and unique. We are in support of it. As a ski association, I personally am vouch for what I believe to be a great project.
Thank you, Mark. Does anybody else wish to speak in here? Well...
I promised you the two minutes.
You'll be the first. Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, members of the planning board. You all just sent a letter from the ENCB that has been referred to many times and has been blown up to, I believe, a 6x8 foot poster at one point, and brought in stating what were believed to be objections. You have just received the letter dated November 17, 2015. Dear Chairman Calavano and members of the planning board, this letter is being submitted to the planning board in response to the planning board's request for an update of the ENCB's comments concerning the project. The applicant has submitted multiple updates along with materials responsive in part to some of the issues raised by the ENCB in the letter of June 18, 2014. Traffic, and I will just go to the end of it, the ENCB is satisfied with the applicant's submission in this regard. Wetlands law, the trail plan now runs outside of the Humpo Marsh area as the trail proceeds up the foothills towards connecting trails. We thank the applicant for changing the path of the trail so to minimally impact on the wetland area while at the same time providing for the users of the preserve to access the trail and the trail system. Phases two and three, the two subsequent phases have since been provided, and both projects help to minimize environmental impacts. We at the ENCB would like to again thank the planning board for soliciting an update from us pertaining to this pending application. Further, we appreciate the responsive efforts on the part of the applicant to have considered our initial comments and requests, and for responding to our request for further information and study, and that is from respectfully, Red Weir, Chairman of the ENCB. This goes along also with, you received the letter in October, which came from the Mid Hudson Sierra Club, which also stated, we are recommending the New Paltz Planning Board not require a full environmental impact statement for the foothills project. And that is the duty for all of you, as you know, is, the next step is, do you feel all the mitigation efforts and the explanations given to date so far are being answered? To me, I would say yes, they are, and the ENCB now agrees that they have been answered and mitigated, along with the Sierra Club, which has also stated that. So thank you, everyone. I think that was two minutes.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
My name is Rich Gottlieb, I live at 50 Hillside Avenue in Highland, and I have two businesses in New Paltz. This is going to be the shortest one yet. I think of community character... I think of community character as something that isn't fixed in time. It's forever changing. And I hark to a saying that I grew up with in the 60s maybe, which is, "You are what you eat." And I don't believe that. I believe you are what you share.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Make it even quicker. This is Bridgette Lillis. She's at Dusene Road, New Paltz.
I support Mohawk Preserve because they protect nature and teach kids about nature and wildlife.
Thank you.
I concur, and I certainly feel like it would be a shame to hold up their project to, and we trust the, and we trust the Mohawk Preserve, so.
Thank you. Of course. Be part of the record. Anybody else wishing to it? We're going to close the motion to close public hearing for the Mohawk Preserve and site plan. Thank you. Second? Thank you, Augusta. All those in favor? We're going to take a three-minute break, get ready to review the.
Michael Zeeler, Village of New Paltz. I'd like to make a couple of comments. I appreciate the planning board's work on the Part 2 of the EAF concerning the Trans-Hudson CVS Five Guys Yet-To-Be-Decided Third Pad Project. So, there's a number of things. I also handed some comments from Susan Blickstein, who I will, she'll send you, and I have a couple of things to say from her. So, first off, there's concern on both our parts, Susan and mine, that you're, there still seems to be the appearance of some segmentation going on. The third pad site is not uniformly being considered in all phases of the Part 2 review. Augusta had asked actually this comment a couple of meetings ago, and the chair specifically said that it was being accounted for, but actually, it's not accounted for in the construction phasing. There is, if there is a third pad that's being advertised for rent, and if that, although there isn't anything there, from the point of view of Seeker, you need to consider it. And it's very likely, if there's a third pad site, the construction will extend for greater than 12 months. In addition, it's not considered in your engineers' calculations for water usage, although it might be considered in some of the other aspects. So, again, I just think that you need to consider that thoroughly and consistently throughout. I'm very appreciative that you all recognize that the clearing and grading proposed for this project is a moderate to large impact. I would say it is indeed a moderate to very large impact for this site. My concerns about this are that there is a, as I've mentioned before, there's an article in your zoning code, Article 13A, that is very clear about clearing and grading, and it repeatedly refers to the planning board's responsibilities and authority to minimize the impacts from clearing and grading on sites. And this applicant has done nothing to suggest how it is that it could design this site in such a way as to minimize the clearing and grading necessary. And you have, the chair and others have noted how this is going to be addressed during the site plan, but I just feel that EIS is the perfect opportunity to look at alternative types of site plans. And it's so much easier to do it in, under the Seeker umbrella than it would be during a site plan review where, having been through this, I know it can be very tedious. Bear with me, sorry. I was also concerned in reading about the groundwater. I feel that there was discussion and numbers thrown around about how roughly 4,500 gallon equivalents per day of water will infiltrate the site, and withdrawal is something in the order of 1,200 to 1,900 gallons per day. But my concern is that once this site is developed, common sense says to me that the infiltration on a site where now completely unpaved is now largely paved, is going to be altered in terms of quantity, in terms of quality, and also in terms of distribution of the water throughout the site. And I think, again, without a full analysis done under an EIS, you're just not going to know the answers to those questions, and you're only going to find out the hard way. The last thing that I want to mention, and it's also a point that Susan brings up, is I respectfully greatly disagree with the analysis that was done on community character. I think it was much too limited in scope. There are a number of things, I think, that rightly fall under community character, and I refer you to the town's master plan and to other documents of that sort that identify the kinds of character and value that we have in this community. For example, an EIS would allow an economic analysis on tourism, for instance, and the visual change that would happen at this site. I know that parts of our main street are not the most welcoming, beautiful places that we have in the community, but the sins of our forbearers do not have to be repeated by us. And this is an extremely prominent site, and this proposal is designed to put this sort of castle building way high up and it's to be visible from all directions. And it's just, having talked to people who make their living here on tourism and people who bring serious tourism dollars into our community, they have repeatedly said that this kind of look for this project would be really a detriment to this area. I think it's also important to consider the cost versus taxes, as well as the, what we've heard previously from during public hearing about the tax assessment relief that CVS and other pharmacies, large pharmacies, often come in and ask for after the fact. Finally, I just want to take a moment to read from Susan's comments. She says, and I'll use the "I," meaning her, "I've prepared many comprehensive plans for communities over the past 27 years as a planner. While I respect the board's engineer greatly in terms of civil engineering expertise, the discussion to date on comprehensive plan consistency has been inadequate." She has attached and excerpted and annotated the comprehensive plan to highlight the many ways in which the proposed Trans-Hudson proposal is inconsistent with our comprehensive plan. And as she stated in prior letters, "This project meets the required thresholds of an EIS." And so, she and I urge and trusted the planning board during your completion of Part 2 and analysis during Part 3, will note the potential for significant impacts in traffic and transportation, community character, comprehensive plan consistency, and impacts on land and water." Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Veronica. Julie.
Does anyone have a helper? She'd like to speak for.
Good.
My name is Bridgette Lillis, and I live on Dusene Road. I don't think that TVS should be in the park because the animals that live there, some will become the beauty home and some will lose their habitat. Also, when you're walking and you're looking for people, hears a throughway more than you do now, I would rather like to hear the birds in the box.
And I'm Julie Lillis, Dusene Road, New Paltz, and I want to express my appreciation for everyone on the board for all they do. So, I just, you know, I've been coming to the latest meetings where we, I've been hearing Dave Plaza go through the impacts, and I'm just hoping there will be a robust discussion of some, of some of the points that have been raised. And even just if everyone, especially Susan's comments, I urge you to look at, they're quite excellent when she discusses the community character issues. And that's, unfortunately, she couldn't speak because she had to leave, but I just urge you to take a look at that. I'm just, I'm going to make just a couple of points on some things that I took notes on during, while hearing Dave speak. And everyone agrees the impact on the land will be great. The forest on the right, as you enter New Paltz, serves a purpose. I think we all believe that, especially a lot of people that stayed here. It sets the tone as you wait at the light. To have no green as you enter New Paltz, and I tell you, I keep thinking about it every time I pass, I'm like, hmm, no green, hmm. It does make a difference to what you're setting, you know, how you set the tone. And Dave Plaza said it fits with stores that, at that end of, you know, at that area in that location, but really, if we use that reasoning, what keeps us from just being overrun by large businesses with large parking lots? The comprehensive plan includes this idea of preserving small-town character, limiting the size of shopping areas, and basically taking into account traffic concerns. I feel the problem is, these are sort of implicit statements. What constitutes preserving small-town character? Sort of subjective, right? What constitutes a large shopping area? Dave had mentioned that his assessment was that it was not a large, it's not excessive, 3,000, or sorry, 13,225 square feet is not excessive, and I would just beg to differ. You know, what would excessive be? Again, we just don't know, there's no exact, you know, it's not an exact science, but it's apparently modeled after the Kingston store, and to me, they look very large, even in the backdrop of large stores. But, and for a pharmacy in this town, certainly it's unprecedented. So, it certainly does nothing to help preserve small-town character, I think we'd agree. Then the issue of traffic concerns, there's no way, it's no way to welcome people to your town, giving them frustratingly long wait to come into town and to leave. The town's character would seriously be negatively impacted by the lack of trees. Among other things, they have aesthetic value, habitat value, and they eat in noise and air pollution reduction. The sound of the cars is more broken up by the trees or regular surface than a building surface. My physics teacher husband told me that. But also, it just makes sense. The building covers a smaller surface area than the forest, so it's not going to do as much for noise dampening, and certainly doesn't do anything to help the pollution from increasingly coming into our town. And I don't know what, we just don't know what impact that will have, so. So, another thing is that Dave mentioned that there's, the town has a sound ordinance but no decibel requirements. This is unfortunate, but it doesn't mean we should just throw up our hands about that issue. Finally, my favorite topic, just one quick little thing about the vernal pool. At a recent meeting, it was stated that the vernal, that the pool on the property collects an inch or so of water. And in fact, I have photos that show it's much more than an inch after a heavy rain. And I took a course on, with the DEC in Hudsonia on Land Resource Management, and I stood on ground, it was described by this woman Gretchen from Hudsonia, as a quality vernal pool, and it looked extremely similar to the depression I was able to see when I looked in myself on the property a long time ago. But I do have pictures, and I, it's clear, there's, you know, a good maybe five inches of water in that spot. So, it's not, it's also, can be determined during a summertime assessment. It should be, a study should be done in the spring because that's the only way to determine whether it's a quality vernal pool as per the town code. So, requiring CVS to do an EIS is certainly warranted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make sense?
I'll keep it brief because I live on Dusene Road, and my ride is leaving for Dusene Road momentarily. So, I have a number of concerns I just wanted to share. In thinking about the drastic landscape change that this project represents, I recall driving on Interstate 84 in Carmel-Patterson area and watching over about a year a green hillside disappear, blasted, filled, and now there's, I don't know if it's coals or Walmart or what, but that's the entrance of that community now. And that's the only thing I think about when I go through that community now, is that big box store on the hill. And I'm very concerned that that's what New Paltz is going to be known for. Welcome to New Paltz. Come to our big box store. On Dusene Road in the summertime, I don't hear the throughway, and as soon as the leaves come off the trees, I hear the throughway. And I'm very concerned about the loss of a noise buffer that I don't think people realize the role that that stretch of trees plays for buffering the throughway and air quality as well. I'm concerned about, I see, you know, the hotel is closed now, the 87 Motel, the diner on the corner there that never seems to do well, and half of ShopRite Plaza is empty. And we're going to, instead, we're going to take a six-acre site that provides these natural services, and we're going to pave it over while all this other property lies vacant. It's bad planning. That's just bad planning, and we're better than that here in New Paltz. The last thing I want to say is, I can't remember it. Oh, the Millbrook Preserve. The town spent $550,000 to protect 60 some acres of the Millbrook Preserve. The village is soon to close on the Shuanggo Preserve property. Collectively, we will have spent in this community a million dollars to protect a very special place in the heart of our community. And this site drains right in there. And one of the great things about the Millbrook Preserve is its natural character, the water quality benefits it provides, the habitat. And we're basically just taking a property and sending the stormwater over into that area. Again, we're spending a million dollars to protect this area. A project like this goes directly counter to that. And I'm very concerned about the traffic. I think the level of service study is just one way to look at this. There should be a broader analysis. It's a really complex intersection there. It's a very complex intersection with the slip lane that provides a lot of benefits. People will get fed up with the delays. They will start using the residential streets even more than they do now as cut-throughs. So, I'm very concerned about all of the impacts. Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Gordon, 12 Calvin Boulevard. Don't have much to add, just want to again thank the town planning board for your service to our community. And really, a lot was already said tonight about the CVS-Trans-Hudson proposal, and I do think that, you know, as the board moves through the EAF and determining significance, it is really important under community character to do a robust fiscal analysis of this project. That's completely recognized as being a component part of Seeker. So, and really, the fiscal analysis could study the true tax implications, sorry, of the project. You know, many spoke, including myself, at previous public hearings around the negative ramifications of their particular use of net lease for their properties. And this is actually an article that I'll leave with Kelly, and it comes out of Bloomington, Indiana. And basically, what had happened there was CBS did one of those net lease swaps in their community, and the executive director of the Association of Indiana Counties basically said, you know, "The math is simple. If big box stores like CBS continue to win cases to lower their taxes, the monetary need needs to come from somewhere else. The tax burden on homeowners will increase on farms and really on a lot of locally owned businesses." So, I just think to, to just skim over community character without looking at a robust fiscal analysis, especially around this project with this particular corporation who we know makes these moves, just seems like it's not very well thought out. It also seems like in that fiscal analysis, we really can take a look at the impacts on other retail businesses within the village and the town. So, again, really want to thank the planning board for all the service that you provide for our community. Thank you for your volunteer service, and have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing?
Good evening. I'm Stana Weisberg. I live at 21 Cooper Street here in New Paltz, and I'm also going to speak to the Trans-Hudson CVS proposal. If you live in New Paltz, you know that that intersection is troublesome and that there are frequent backups, and not just on weekends. This project is large, especially if there will be four businesses, the CVS, Five Guys, and the two undetermined ones that may also be high turnover. and the two undetermined ones that may also be high turnover. It deserves a more comprehensive traffic study. This one concludes that impact will be low, but this is based on untested modifications. At the last meeting, they said the study based projected traffic on a reduced cycle length. Instead of two minutes, it's one hundred seconds between when a light that turned red would turn green again. However, in a meeting months ago, the C V S representative said they would be lengthening the amount of time cars in the stacking lane would have. Exactly what do they plan to do must be clearly outlined, and further study is needed. There are other unanswered questions such as how will H W DuBois be affected, especially with the driveway moving towards this road? Also, there is the question of the slip lane that allows cars to turn right onto north putt corners without stopping. They are not adequately addressing the impact of getting rid of this lane, which was obviously put in to help ease traffic congestion. It still isn't clear whether or not the D O T would be recommending this change without the C V S plan. And so I'm asking, has anyone produced a document from the D O T about this? And I'd like to reiterate what everybody else has said about community character and all the other things that are going to impact as well. And we really hope that you'll acquire a full environmental impact study.
Anybody else wish to make any public comments? With that, we'll close the public comment session. And we'll get on to the application section. First up, anybody here from Brooklyn? Oh, there he is. Oh, I said, I'm sorry. I got too many people are, who is Brooks? I got that far, right? I'll do it. Okay. Let's go quickly on this. No comments at the public hearing on the application. Dave? Now the rest? It is kind of rough. And we have to...
You have a perfect, I get it, I got it.
Right.
It's not, it doesn't qualify as a subdivision of two thirty-nine.
Right. We had the application and modification and asked the board if there are any comments they have on it.
No comments.
Nope, no comments. What do you got? Oh, well, there's... No, we just, yeah, just a tringext story in unison.
Oh, on the...
Yeah, yeah. So we don't, go ahead.
Is there a site visit by the board?
We never, I didn't get there. It's not the way the holidays are.
One question that came up is there was a hit on the D E C site on Archaeological. And so Tim went to Shippensburg and got the sign off on that. That was the one thing that I saw.
Okay.
They didn't call me. Something was found a half mile over the site.
You could probably go a half mile to get to the preserve.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on it?
Otherwise, the E A F just said there was a reduced disturbance. Tim, we looked at the driveway and the amount of disturbance that was going to happen from the... It fell under the one acre, so there wouldn't be stormwater today, so required on that.
How much under did it fall?
I think it was point nine, the disturbance.
That's under weeks' worth.
Okay. First, why would we go through a seek of determination now on that?
We'll use that one. I've got a part two here that I can go through with.
Okay. I'm, I'm more than good.
Okay. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? It does create its residentially zoned land, but the answer is no. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use? It's, the site is, would produce more lots as far as density. You've got a large lot plus existing homes, the answer is no. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that are, that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? There is no critical environmental area, so the answer is no. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community in its residentially zone? Will the proposed action result in adverse change in existing loading, traffic, or after existing, existing or effects of existing infrastructure for mass transit biking and walkover? The answer is no. It would be one more trip a week hour for residents, new residents. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonable renewable energy conservation or renewable energy? This is for a subdivision. A new home that we built would have to comply with the New York Energy Standards. It's part of the district. Will the proposed action impact existing public, private water bodies? Will the proposed action impact existing public, private wastewater treatment facilities? The answer is no on that. A new home would have both the individual well and septic system. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architecture, or aesthetic resources by the checking of the shipboat? The answer is no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality? For one family residence, the answer is no. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage? The answer is no. This driveway is going through the woods back to a house. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
Okay. The answer all came out. Now do we have a motion for negative declaration? We see here for the Brooks two lot subdivision. Maggie Lyle, is there a second? Thank you, Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, as far as the... Anything on the site, I think we can go to preliminary approval for the Brooks two lot subdivision?
Want to do the waiver request, subdivision of Brooks?
Okay.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks and everything. Right request of one twenty-one...
Seventeen D.
Seventeen D. I gotta look at my book if I don't need to. Do we have one? No, we don't. There's a requirement in chapter one twenty-one on improvements. And the board can waive certain, certain requirements and improvements on it. And so I think we have, I'll go for, I'll do it in two parts. Make a motion for waiving the requirements in one twenty-one dash seventeen improvements for curbs, water mains, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, street signs, and street trees.
Is this when we do a sidewalk easement?
You're getting to that, right? Okay?
Spoil all, spoil everything.
I know. So this is a request for a waiver for the board to grant waivers for those curbs, water mains, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, street signs, street trees.
They don't have a request?
I don't know if we have a request for that.
You submitted a request for a waiver?
I request a waiver.
Yeah, I figured you would. So you want to grant motion for that? Thank you. Okay. All those in favor? Sidewalks. Generally, we like to see an easement. What about the size of the easement?
Fifteen.
Fifteen foot easement along the road.
In addition to the highway easement or?
Yeah, for a potential sidewalk, if and when a sidewalk district is ever created.
Yeah, that's fine.
So on the map, it'll show a fifteen foot section across both properties for a sidewalk easement. David can show you how that would go in there. Oh, that was, what you got? He's got one. What's required? Fifty?
I think it's fifty and thirty.
Okay. Hundred foot setback? We're good. So you won't, you won't impact the setback or the requirement achieved. Okay, we've done the waivers.
Can you close the public hearing?
We have to seek it first, then we can close. Right, now we can close. Make a motion, close the public hearing on the Brooks two lot subdivision. Make it, Tom? Make it, Lyle? All those in favor? Now, close the hearing, done the waivers. Have a motion to grant preliminary subdivision approval for the Brooks two lot subdivision?
Subject to an easement.
Subject to the sidewalk feature, subject to table of appropriations fees for the two lot. Any other fees being required? The question is, do you want to put a note on the plan that the, when a disturbance must be observed and shown on the plan? Because right now you're point nine.
Right.
The roadway becomes white for some reason, when it occurs. Just in the case that you have, add that note to make sure that the space is shown. Speaking of a two lot subdivision, I have a high roll previous year for close, but not inaccessible. The board's intention was to keep it close, but not inaccessible.
Okay. So we'll have a motion for preliminary site subdivision approval for Brooks two lot subdivision, conditioned upon the addition notes for the side and showing of the sidewalk easement. You want to summarize that dissertation? We'll make sure the minute, thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Maggie, Tom? Second, make a request. Hear further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to waive final public hearing on the Brooks two lot subdivision, as there have been no issues raised by the public. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for approval of the Brooks two lot subdivision, any of the conditions of the sidewalk easement and others that were mentioned in the preliminary approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what happened? We've gone through the approval process, you've granted approval on it. What you do is have to get the map notes, work with Dave, what map notes are needed, show the sidewalk improvements. Deal with Kelly on what's required to bring in maps for signatures, in my laws and paper copies, she knows how many of that. Get the map notes and diagrams straightened out with Dave. Once he signs off, get the copies made, bring them into Kelly. We'll sign off on that, okay? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Help big builders. You can tell me what you did, and that's about as far as we're going to get tonight. We will go from there.
We do John Clayton from Lake Kelly, the applicant. Before you left, I remember I had said that we were going to do some revisions to the plans, to increase the plans in order to do a little less disturbance and stormwater friendly. the plans, to the plans, to do a little less disturbance and, uh, stop more friendly, we did those every time. Uh, each lot, we basically changed the driveway, grades and locations to be shorter, and that's, that's previously disturbed, so, remember, this lot here had a driveway that was way over here, and so we came in here, we shortened that up to about half the length, and we put it here and made that swing here. And on this lot, if you remember, this driveway came up, made a turn, and came into this way, had a central retaining order went along with that. We've eliminated all that and made basically one short stump driveway right into the house. Houses are at the same locations that they were previously. What we've done also, we revised the set, the design, well, locations for the septic are the same, we've, um, we've chosen a different type of technology, that's where we have an approval, the development systems. And basically what that has done is that it reduced the size of the central footprint habitat, also again, we've created less disturbance. And what that did was it pulled the septic up the hill, far away from the prompted line, so where the footprint before was something in this magnitude, it's basically this magnitude now. And this lot, the same thing, the septic went, uh, this size, and now it's basically half the size. We know we have to make application for those to kind of help with this, because we approved, and had a little conversations with them, and we have the application, we want to come to the board first to show that we're doing, so we can end on that. I know the main thing is the drainage, so I'll start with, uh, we provided the full drainage analysis, included, basically, it's, it's a strip, although we don't follow any requirements of providing that, or less than an equal disturbance, uh, for significant development. But we provided you the basic full drainage analysis, and analyzes the one, the ten, the twenty-five, and fifteen, and a hundred, which is more than half on the previous application. And in turn with that, we've also sized the swell, uh, versus the middle, properly per se, uh, to also handle, we want to be stronger than that. And what we did was, we eliminated the check dams in the swell, we made it a little wider, and a little bit deeper with brick rack, so we don't have an issue with the concern of septication on the check dams, and we eliminated that. By making the brick rack deeper and swell wider, the velocity is actually less than a half a foot. So, we included those changes. At the end here, at the bottom, we included, uh, energy dissipators, a fancy word for it, but basically, it's a, it's a plunge pool, so at the end of the swell, the water will slow down even further, basically, almost still, and then it can run as great a path as it does now off the adjacent property. Uh, I did meet with the adjacent property owner, he walked it, it was a very good walk, very informed, saw what's going on there, and what the issues were. I don't disagree with the property owner that, you know, he, he has, you know, wet property. Uh, I think the reason it lays at the bottom of the hill, uh, and this property flattens out, more so here, as you see the condo line starts to scrape apart, it's become much flatter, and there's really no way for the water to get, where it needs to go this way. So, what we're doing is, I've redesigned the drainage, we had big infiltrating our tank systems here at the bottom of each site, but basically, we're going to clear the entire back of the site, um, try to attend to it more. So, what we did was, we've moved new systems up to just behind the house here, and just to the side of the house here, they're cold tech chambers, and if you've seen them, basically half a pipe that sits on stone, and underneath the stone, we put it on the drainage. Um, what we've done is redesigned these systems not to account for any infiltration. So, we are collecting water from the house and the driveway, basically, the front portion of the site goes to these systems by our swell catch basin, there's small catch basins around, twelve by twelve catch basins that catch all the leakers, and then you run off from the driveway in the house, that directs this water to that system, system access as an underground network, uh, protection area. Controls the flow, each system discharges into the swell. By doing so, we're actually making the drainage a little better, based on standard engineering numbers, we're reducing the flow rate discharge from the property for a freedom of the water direction, that's for each stall. So, we feel that combination of the erosion control, the swimming basin at the end, and reduction in flow rate should significantly help the use of property and not make the situation any worse, should make it better.
John, can you confirm for the board where the, the, you know, where that's flowing in relation to some of the...
For a picture? Color. Uh, basically, these are the two lots here, so these are the two proposed house sites, well driven, two ovens right here. So, that swell basically comes down the property here. The adjacent property owner, this house is going to be here, so grade goes this way. So, all, all of our water discharge comes this way. This swell meets a very flat low, low line swell here that combine, and then comes to this property downstream, where it hits the driving lanes of the property. So, what we've effectively done is, most of our drainage does not affect, or all of our drainage, does not affect this, this house at all. Comes to this flat area of this property, where this swell picks it up and brings it into this way. And in doing our drainage, basically, we've taken out half of the lots. So, this whole lot that used to drain here, half of it will now drain to where it should go, reducing, uh, to this portion of this property, getting it into the swell. This already, again, same scenario, half the lot, get into the swell without running all, throughout the back of the property. This side of the property was, was consistently the same slope, so we really wasn't allowed to stand over there, you know, wet conditions there, and it gets into the swell and go. So, just to give you an idea, I met with, I met with the college as well, and we did a drainage study combined with their, with their drainage, it's in the report. Um, the drainage area is roughly eight acres, we're two acre parcel, so about twenty-five percent of the drainage area that we can control. And out of that, eight acres, we're only developing less than one. So, we're at, you know, ten percent, and out of that, we're only adding about point four acres of impervious surface, so we're at five percent. So, in the overall scheme of things, we really can't control seventy-five percent of the water that's coming from the site. And the twenty-five percent that we can control, we are reducing it to less than three hundred yards. So, that's, that's all we, so we're just going to go, basically, for board to do the consultation, and, um, that's pretty much, that's pretty much.
Dave, you want to go over your comments?
Can.
Let me ask the procedural first. This has gone on so long, nearly years, and it's probably costing, you know, you guys, the applicant and the neighbors, so much money, it's, and, you know, the neighbors are saying they may have more time to look through things. I see in the, um, memo here, it says they had to get the plans to be up, they had to boil them. Is it possible for you guys to share this information with these very concerned neighbors? Because this just draws everything out, and it takes forever, and like, let's try to get this going.
Yeah, I thought at a previous meeting that we acknowledged that, that they shouldn't have to boil, that we had the problem with stuff being released.
Okay.
In, in, in the future, we can send electronic comments or submit, but I will say, um, we would like that same courtesy on our behalf, because again, as I said before, when we come back, if you continue, or you did continue your hearing, we'd like to have those comments so that we can actually respond to them and put a bow on this, as you suggested, it's about time we all do, so.
I did provide this and the, the summer format.
Couple of things. One was the, storm water was based on type three storm, this is a type two storm area, so we need to run that, that'll show a little more water to deal with. My biggest concern was the, the maintenance. We were still dealing with maintenance on this. There were notes on the previous plan that detailed how maintenance was going to be done, how frequently the inspection was going to happen. We really need something nailed down on this as far as maintenance, because this, this storm water system really needs to be maintained so it'll work.
Well, if I mean, on that point, we're comfortable, and, and if there are other ways that you've dealt with it in the past, we're happy to listen to that and try to address it. From our perspective, we'd be comfortable, um, setting forth that it would be, um, an easement area that would be offered for dedication if the town wanted it, we recognize the town may not want it, we can also, we're also comfortable saying that the town could if it wanted to, but would not have the obligation to intervene if there was a failure, and charge it back as a special assessment to the owners. I mean, again, it's not a, it's not a large subdivision of the homeowners association that can take on that obligation, but we're happy to, we understand the maintenance issue, and if you've got particular ways in which you've solidified in the past, we're, we're happy to listen to that and we're not opposed to the motion.
This system is, part of it is down like eight feet below grade, you're saying, no?
The colts are shallow, and what I did was, I brought them closer to the house, so that these catch basins, they basically have the one catch basin that is in the system, so that it's readily accessible. Usually what they do is, they recommend usually five inches or so that the system can check, and if it gets a lot of heavy seven going, or, you know, there's other factors going on, that it can clean. So, what you do is you come to this catch basin here, and you're basically cleaning the system, and then each row has a port. So, that's why bringing them closer to the houses, we feel that, you know, they're easily accessible, almost like a separate, what they've done, uh, for whatever reason, actually cleaned. So, the other thing are the catch basins around the house, there's small catch basins, there's twelve by twelve catch basins, and, you know, anybody can go ahead and clean that, block down on this, that's why we pulled them closer to the house. There's a maintenance component, and, um, I don't know if I should be putting this together, we just wanted to go with this for the first, before we, in any degree. The swell, uh, we do have the swell and easement, and we propose that that would be offered dedication to the town, so, taking, uh, if not, we put a note that you have the right to not have the obligation to, to, to maintenance that would be necessary.
It's more inspection, inspection.
We've also provided an extension of these, and so that they have the access to.
John, your, your inlets are shallow, some of them are foot and a half deep or so, but I'm looking at your grading here, and I'm seeing grades above the coltax. In fact, I see one grade that...
Yeah, this lot, yes.
On lot two here, we've got a pipe, the outlet pipe is out of the ground. I mean, you're putting this in a slope.
Yeah, there, there's step. Yeah, in there's a two seventy-one, and the ground there is a two seventy-two.
So, you've got the pipe out of the ground? I mean, you've got an eight inch pipe there? You gotta, you gotta get them in the ground?
It should be in the ground.
This is not a system that a homeowner really is used to as far as maintaining, and so I'm, I'm really struggling with whether this system makes sense. I agree that there's less disturbance there, and I also, one of the factors with the trenches in the back took the whole lot, instead of just the, the front half of the lot. But I, again, I think maintenance is an issue, we've got, uh, point nine-three acres of disturbance, and I see an area here that doesn't show the contours that needs to be on this lot two. I think there's more fill that goes in here. This area right here shows no contours, everything blending in.
Correct, and we still count that in the disturbance area.
You're not going to go beyond that?
No.
Even with your pipe hanging out of the ground? Because you're going to have to bury it?
Yeah. And, uh, the reason why we did this system was to avoid the large system at the bottom of the lot, because there wasn't any way to access that. So, that's why we brought the lot smaller.
Maybe you can describe to the board how you maintain this system?
Basically, the, the systems are, they're half bikes and they sit on stone. And what happens is, there are cleanup ports on the, on the line, so we imagine, basically, it's a cleanup that comes up to the ground, they usually will hook in, put a jet, and it's basically jet out the line, and then the truck will, truck will suck out the debris as they're jettling the line.
How often do they have to be replaced usually?
Usually, they recommend every, every five to seven years, depending on, you know, if you're getting heavy or anything. These systems are, are more for, they, they really belong to commercial parking lots, and that, that's a lot of heavy sand and rubbish, and debris. I think the major issue you're going to have here probably is, uh, getting to the catch basins, and that's why we put the catch basin, we sump some, and we've oversized the pipes to account for any potential block of debris. We can get some literature.
If you had to do this tomorrow, where would you go and...
If we would do this, we would go to a company that, you know, like a Tan Enterprises, and if we move them, they're basically a pipe jetting company, or any sort of company that can clean designs, and, um, cost wise, depends on the size of the system I have.
Wherever a homeowner...
He would call up, uh, like a septic, you know, septic pumping company, or anybody like that, that has the ability to, to clean pipe jet pipe, and all of them, have them come out and clean it and assess it.
And what would be his indication that it needed it? And what would indicate it needed it? You're a non-resident, say if it's a rental property, how would anybody know?
What would, what would really set it off is your catch basins would either overflow, so the water would be handling the system, and/or your underdrain wouldn't be flowing out of it. So, most likely, your catch basin is, final catch basin, you probably, you probably...
You're bubbling up.
And that's like a, like a...
We don't need to get to that point. I mean, that's when it's really failed, and you're doing nothing for drainage.
And at that point, the catch basin would overflow, there's a swell that goes on the backside of the septic, and you can directly to that swell, and that's the more hassle.
And let's say if, if someone brought, if this is, you know, a house that's oriented to students, like, how would they know before that point, or even at that point, how would they know that it's starting to back up? How would anyone know?
Well, the owner, the, the owner...
Owner would check it out.
Check it out, and, and it's the same obligation that any homeowner, building owner would have, and, um, and again, I, I...
I mean, it's like, it is like any other system, and it's like your septic tank, and you just, you know that it has to be pumped every, every five years, three, five years...
Maybe don't, so on Christmas Eve, it ruins your... I mean, that's...
It's much more complicated than a septic tank, pumping a septic tank.
Well, not, not really. Basically, just stone and pipe, there's no...
And the company you call...
Put a hose on the septic tank, and you would turn on the pump, this is not that easy. You've got to clean the debris out of the bottom of the...
If the debris, if the debris, basically, it's a residential lot, I don't think there's going to be a lot of trash and debris making into the system.
Keep the leaves and everything else.
That's why I had the last catch basin, sump, there was a foot, we're calling snouts, we put snout on, keep the...
Okay.
Well...
Go ahead.
Um, not to change topics, but, oh.
I'll just, I'll get some, later, so...
Is there also a possible, is there a, will keep one of these, or is that actually a garden stall, or is it just a little shop?
Oh, sure. We've done, you know, this is...
Coltax.
Coltax contact... Coltax, okay. Who's wanted, uh, water main, what do we do on campus?
It's very common for commercial properties, but uncommon for residential.
Pardon? Looking, uh, I was suggesting to give an example, what's been used for residential?
Yeah, actually, um, I'll bring them. Basically, Coltax or Coltax is what was manufactured, they have it as a, it's a, it's a...
Um, Dave, I just wondered, am I, I don't know, not seeing it in your mouth, did the new plans talk about that it's a steeper slope than we thought before, or anyone thought? Is that, what do you think about how that changes things, or if it does?
Uh, I think it's harder to certainly service anything behind the houses, you know, to be able to get back there, you can sell, for example. I still have concerns about the septic, that's the health department's issue, but they're going to have to deal with. There were, Mr. Ariel sent a letter explaining everything that was going to be done on the plans, and that was before plans were developed. So, if we can get a, a narrative that really addresses what's been provided on the plans, and there's also some steep slope issues, several items that needed to be answered that were going to be answered over time, so I think it's just kind of catching up.
Sure.
And this is, since it's a new design, should this be referred to the ENCB, again, to get their comments?
Yeah. Let me ask another general question, okay. This is something also we were talking about with CDS that I just don't have the knowledge about. So, you just said that, that the runoff will be, uh, let's see, that basically it'll be making the situation better through technology, if I have that right. Okay. Okay, and this, you know, we're talking about this with CVS, so, but then the memo from Grant and Lyon says, um, even if the problem exists off-site, whether it's surface water or subsurface water, it can't be ignored. Our client will face greater damage to its property if this issue is not resolved. If Mr. Stut is still harmed by this project, the board must deny his application. I, it's hard for me to know, like, we're sending different information, you know, from both sides. It's hard for me to kind of like...
We're completely comfortable with that comment, because we think it's just...
Because you don't think it's using harsh...
It's just factually... In fact, even the existing condition doesn't really support the scientific conclusion that runoff from our property is contributing significantly to the problem. But that being the case, we've still been designed to lessen the impact, so that our condition post-developing, with respect to runoff, will be better than it is now. So we're just really comfortable with that. I, I think the board takes that comment, Mr. Lyon, Mr. Lyon's letter, very seriously, and I think it will bring the matter quickly to a conclusion.
I think we ought to clarify the better, too. The peak rate of runoff has been reduced here. They're going to get the runoff, they're still going to get the runoff, because there's more impervious surface, there's gonna be a little more volume runoff here. The rate is reduced by .3% for the one year, 1.2% for the 10-year, and 3.7% for the 100 years, so there's a minor reduction in rate, but it's, there's still other factors involved there.
Well, I guess one thing is, what is it, your opinion, that there's no way that the neighbors will be harmed by this project?
Is it my opinion?
I don't know, I'm just trying to get all the, you know, knowledge I can.
I'm concerned about it being maintained, that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, okay.
There needs to be some really bulletproof way that it can be maintained, and it's not, somebody has to sue somebody else to get it that way.
Yeah.
When it fails, there's a real problem down the slope.
All right.
Is it just a problem in terms of the quantity of drainage, or is it...
I think the septic is pretty well cut off.
If this system were to fail, would it come out of the ground, all our catch bases?
Septic's pretty separate from this.
If I could just add to your question, anytime you do that, there's some, there's some... That's why, you know, we're, we're gonna use, favors most long-term, and that's why I'm considering that, so it can't be high on the grid, and lots of stuff, but let's just say it's...
If this were more disturbance, a bigger project, there would be volume reduction that would be required by the biggest commitment, but it doesn't have the area of disturbance that requires that.
Okay, two things I wanna accomplish here is, one, I did get the letter, and I would like to extend the public hearing to our December meeting. I would like the, to do as much engineering work and get it in, so we could see that. The date, I'll show you, the date cutoff is November 23rd, for getting something in for our next meeting. That's today. That's impossible. I understand that, okay? But if you got something in to us by Wednesday before the next meeting, that gives you holidays and things of that sort, but it gives you some more time to take a look at it, so the board can take a look at it and put you get for it.
We can do that.
And, and again, to the extent that, yeah...
Officer calls, did you say?
And to the extent that you can get responses back in the same timeframe, so the board has something at that meeting, not at that meeting, but prior to going into the meeting, that both sides are actually see what each other has handed in on that Wednesday, so they have time to digest what's been said, and what's been put about it. And so I think those are the things I'd like to continue the public hearing to, to the December meeting. I'll make the motion, I'll have a second. Thank you, Del, although the favor.
Thank you, members of the board, appreciate it.
I don't get an escrow payment.
I understand that. May I, will he also give an opportunity to see if your consultants have commented on it, or maybe have seen it before we... It just helps us be more responsive to you, and I, I mean, I'm gonna, that is up to me, because I wanna make sure they have the, by the time you leave the...
I already gave him the job.
All right, he's got a copy.
But I mean, before, before we...
Until I get the escrow, he's not working on it.
No, I got, you got that message, right?
Okay, to accept that he has something, by then, we'll make it available, then.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, good night. You too. Hopefully, we'll get out of here before then.
Yeah. Question, is the board gonna be taking action tonight and reporting this back to the ENCB?
I think we did take act, we are gonna send it to the ENCB. Usually, we don't take a vote on it, we just, somebody acknowledges it, the board knows to send it to them. Okay, moving right along. The swish sheets. And pick up with, uh, Mohawk. And continuing our review of... Port two.
Well, I think there were two new people speaking at the public hearing.
They, um... Just, and introduce the board.
Sure, Glenn Hope, looks like, very proud to give that all, we, all of that, but I'm gonna introduce our conservation science team, Dr. Elizabeth Wong and John Thompson, our senior colleges and our director of conservation science, so if there's any questions on the plans happening on those buttons, or if they'd like to answer this. Of course, Ted Kowalski, of course.
He has the best signature I've ever seen.
Yes.
Yeah, every time, I'm like, that's amazing.
It's like one of his shoulders.
Yeah, it's great.
It's a vortex.
Yeah, did you practice it a lot as a kid?
One thing I might wanna clarify at the outset, Mr. Kowalski, if I may, is that there were several comments made in the public hearing about the Mohawk Preserve Spence, and that is not the Mohawk Preserve Spence, it's open spaces to the spence.
I feel like we've talked about this 100 times, but I haven't written anything down, I guess. Lowering the speed limit on 299, I know this is not their decision or artisan, but it seems like maybe it's out of help a lot of the concerns about traffic, I don't know.
Well, through, oh, you missed a meeting, you were right there. Anyway, we asked, we asked, we asked Glenn, and the traffic consultant, to dig back into the, um, traffic accidents along the stretch of 299, and where they are in the intersection wise, that they had for. And, and part of that, it'll be something that, you know, again, we would submit to the town, to see if they wanna move forward on that. So that's why we were just gathering.
I think that would really, would help me, and I think a lot of people, if there was some kind of effort, so far, I don't, I haven't heard from anyone, that, other than it's a very hard thing to do, to get the speed limit reduced, I've heard that like 10 times already, but I don't know if there's anybody to ask, so...
Reserve, that's, um, November 23rd, you know, the...
Oh, okay.
Okay, and so that hasn't happened yet. As far as you know, they haven't, they haven't taken it up yet.
Town needs to fill out DOT T9, and for requests to DOT.
Can we re-ask the town then?
Well, as part of our review...
Actually, we actually, I believe we fill out T9, and...
I mean, I think I wrote down some, at some point, two out of three cars go to Minnewaska and not Mohawk, or some statistic like that?
That was, that was...
Minnewaska, um, has 300,000 visitors a year, and approximately 150,000 visitors.
Yeah. I mean, it's, we have these discussions all the time, it's a hard thing, but it's not an applicant's fault, you know, it's not, it's kind of no one's fault, but it is still a huge issue that we have to deal with, that's town.
Well, we also, we also had talked about, we proposed the town to clean up the Gatehouse Road intersection.
Okay.
With the thought process that people won't be doing 55 miles an hour into Gatehouse Road, going west, and that people coming out of Gatehouse Road would have better visibility of, of east and west on 299, and the people going west, and having to make a right turn, just pick on Tom, he'll have to slow down a bit, to make a right-hand turn, rather than to make the angle turn. So, in the little ways that we can do it, it may be successful, but I, I agree with you, what we're seeing out of this thing is to renew a request to lower the speed limits, and I wanna use the accident information that we get, some things, steps that we're taking as a town, to get the town board to move forward on, on the request to DOT.
Mike, I did hear from the county planning office, and they graciously agreed to give us some accident data to fulfill our request, and we'll have that for...
Okay.
And the one thing about DOT is that they're notoriously independent, I mean, I had this issue on a lot of developments, a lot of people were asking, Dave, we're gonna ask the DOT to put out, and lower the speed limit, they decide how they just... They, they have a, I think, part of it is that they just have a bigger picture, a traffic flow, and some of the speed limit issue is looked at a little differently by them. Well, one thing I might just end to that is that, this, that road used to be 45 miles per hour, it's a higher length, six miles from New Falls to its end. At one point, it went up to 55. Now, Gardner previously made a request for its section to be lowered, but they asked for 40, not 45, and DOT said no. One thought would be, you know, if the two town boards asked together to re, have it reposted to 45, which it once was, it might be more impactful, coming from two towns, if that was a possibility. And you women certainly wrote the season in the chapter, the speed limit, lower to 45, but I mean, it's, it's beyond our locus of control, so I mean, we have to look at 55 limit, and show that there's, that we mitigated adverse effects from that.
Well, I, I think the point is, that from our aspect, our reviewing this project, and reviewing information on traffic accidents and potential, and, and the addition of a parking lot on 299, we make our case. We bring it to the town board, we make the case that maybe working jointly with the Gardner Town Board, and make a request to DOT, 245 miles an hour would be beneficial, and see where it goes, but I think that's, at least what I know, coming out of this project, is something that we're all pushing for, so. Okay, let's, Carol's gonna walk us through...
Some of the impacts.
The impacts, gonna do them.
Right, we learned, this week was, started with number seven, impact on plants and animals. Proposed action may result, may result in loss of law, law or harm, and yes, the proposed impact, proposed improvements will have minor impacts, particularly to those stationary species, however, they're considered to be minor and mitigated to the maximum extent possible. And then, we cover A through D cumulatively, which could actionary cause a reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species, or any rare threatened endangered species as proposed by near state, federal government, as well as special concern species, conservation species, and habitat of those species, such as recovery while it was. Events of no, small or minimal impact may occur, threatened danger to species assessment was performed, using reliable source review in the local parcel in relevant regions, and field reconnaissance on the primary areas of disturbance, that being Testimony Gateway and Hasbro. U.S. Fish and Wildlife indicated a three federal species and two near state species. Indiana bat, northern long-eared bat, bob turtle, hive bill, breed, and red-headed woodpecker, and no significant natural communities. And then, New York State also indicated a number of historic species. All the identified species were listed by the sources, or identified as having no potential present on the site, or that the project may affect, but not likely to adverse affect the species. Of particular concern to most people are the bats, both Indiana and northern long-eared. There may be, there will be a small potential disturbance to potential roosting habitat, but that would be mitigated by the felling trees in that smaller area to, identified critical area of the hibernation period, so we will not be affecting the roost potential of the, of those bats, and hibernation foraging will not be in that figure. Bob turtle, which was a very specific habitat, and that was not, that combination of the habitat was not found in any of those proposed areas. The hive bill breed on the Mohawk has indicated that due to existing, or due to storm damage to beaver dam, that that habitat may no longer exist. And, I'm sorry?
Thanks, beavers.
Nonetheless, it recommended a disturbance to the wetland areas adjacent to Humba Marsh, and we're not even sure that that, I don't even think that will occur, but will occur during the outside of nesting, fledging species, so therefore, no potential impact. Mohawk Preserve has done studies and indicated that red-headed woodpecker breeding is identified Humba Marsh, but south of 299, none in the wood impact area, so their habitat will not be significantly impacted, and so are finding for all the plant species. In addition to truly minimal impact, much of the site remains significantly impacted from past, including agricultural use. Mitigation, any, mitigation to any impact, to far and far, being the fact that proposed action will limit any future alteration to the system habitats, and further preserve the site, and additional will provide educational opportunities into viewing information displays and classroom opportunities, as a result, only as a result of proposed action. We, Alton has also indicated that the Butterfield Hills, I guess, and the Oak Woodland Study Area from Sudine, New Falls folks, will remain intact. Legacy trees will be preserved, and where disturbance is necessary, which is a minimal area, ground surveys will be conducted by Mohawk personnel, to identify any species and move them relocating. Proposed action will harm or hinder any migration patterns, or the ability, animals' abilities to use the site. Proposed action will harm or hinder any migration patterns or the ability, animals' abilities to use the site as they traverse over great improvements or beneath elevated walkway and pond or walls. And preserve will continue to identify enhanced connectivity of habitats in and around the project site or land protection and stewardship. So accordingly, there will be no significant adverse impact to items A through D.
Just one question about that, we're gonna need some sort of condition that, you said there's gonna be trained personnel to supervise the start of construction? Are they going to be available doing protective patrol during the construction period or just at the start?
Well, certainly before construction, uh, gee, talked about having trained personnel, some of the citizen scientists who spoke this evening were familiar with the site, particularly, you know, with respect to the three turtle species identified out there. Uh, I think that monitoring should go on during construction and.
So there will be out there as long as there's construction activity in some form. And when you say trained, what do we mean by trained? Can I ask you?
Yeah, I, I think our staff will be out there. And we have citizen scientists who are trained biologists and who spoke here tonight.
So are they trained to do something related to the construction or they just gather?
Um, people that are, that can identify wildlife, understand what to look for on the site. And if it's turtles, for instance, we, you, we need some reach of activities in the house.
Is it like lawyers when you don't want your well being done by a landless attorney?
Right.
Is that the same kind of thing that goes on with the, oh, but we can make pretty much out of it? Is that the same sort of thing that's going on with these trained people, a biologist who has experience with birds doing turtles? Is that the same, is that a trained person doing the right thing?
Um, no, these are the people that understood the species that we were, that may be impacted, that would be on that.
So you know, you're sending people out to know what turtle nesting has and half, has lived like. What kind of, what kind of things to look for when you're going out and walking it to see if there's any of them.
You have terrestrial biologists, or you have herpile experts, you would have ornithologists.
So there'll be a correspondence between expertise and activity.
Right.
So what I'm thinking towards is there should be a condition that you run have a construction schedule. You identify the people who will be responsible for these monitoring activities. And there'll be some coordination with the village inspector, so she's aware of when construction is ongoing. There should be somebody on the site to be monitoring these activities.
Condition, site is like, right?
Yeah. That'll be stuff that we'll have in general condition of construction.
Well, we'll note it in here.
Yep.
For that.
Only, I mean, I would say that we will voluntarily do.
Well, if you're offering. I didn't say condition, I'm just gonna say to note that, uh.
From an environmental.
If you're offering that as a litigation, it's a, there should be some coordination with the village inspector before.
Is that, is that a concern that you have this one point four acres until someone, which I said? Somebody you would ask another African?
If there was, oh, my grief, if it's a protected species.
Well, the title of that is in the, is in Humboldt Marsh, or was in Humboldt Marsh, which will not be impacted. So perhaps that could go into to just when they're looking on the elevated walk.
They have said they're doing this, we're relying upon representation. We would like to have this activity coordinated with the applicant so that the community, well, representation is being conducted. If you don't have that, then you can sue and spin it out.
Yeah, we're also concerned about the, you know, the carrier and the, or the.
Just the whole list.
Sharpened hog and also the other four species that are out there, that we would want to make sure, you know, for example, we're not going to be cutting trees if there was more during fall season, in the wrong season. So we would base our construction schedule accordingly to protect those roosting habitats.
True, um, some of the, uh, the impacts on, that's why the plants and animal species on this versus the documentation of the environmental habitat assessment forms or assessment variables that we have to apply laws of appropriate. But the bottom line is we find there's no significant adverse impact. E, the proposed action may diminish the capacity of national, of the registered national natural landmark to support biological community it was established to protect and the project is not within any national, natural landmark. Proposed action may result in removal of or ground disturbance in any portions of designated significant natural community. And again, proposed action will not result in removal or ground disturbance. Any portion of significant natural community is not located within the project area. Gee, the proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting breeding, foraging, overland habitats of the predominant species that actively occupy the project site and it will result in small impact. Uh, again, the project will not permanently convert a significant area of foothills, rather approximately two tenths of one percent. And this is further divided into several small areas, but the coordination that we just spoke about will also mitigate that. Beach actually requires a conversion of more than ten acres of forest, grassland or any other regionally or locally important habitat. And it will not convert more than ten acres. I, the proposed action allows use of herbicides and pesticides. Currently, Mohawk does not use it on any of its property, but maybe in the future, we've done, reported it to be done by licensed professional for all applicable laws.
In city accordance with an integrated pest management.
Yes, I agree.
Other impacts, we, uh, applicants, the proposed action may displace existing flora and fauna to other areas of property. And it will result in a small, small impact according to, because of displacement. But as over ninety-nine percent of the property will remain unimpacted, that is again, not a significant adverse impact. So that's, uh, part seven. Right, is the impact on agricultural resources.
Can I just go back to J one? That middle sentence, mature vegetation, mature, mature vegetation, including large trees will be relocated. You're removing mature trees?
Uh, identified species will be relocated, mature vegetation, large trees will be relocated.
We are coordinating some, some changes in some of.
I'm just, you know, we had discussed moving some large trees, some of the large areas could be moved. They could be used as part of offering in other areas, so.
Since the applicant decided to use a space truck and reuse the site design.
Well, this is the first, usually don't want to lose large trees, but I'm sure you have capabilities.
So we could, uh, take it for other projects?
Okay.
Impact on agricultural resources. All proposed improvements will take place in town, New Falls's A through district. Part proposed action, the agricultural lands will continue to be used for agricultural purposes. The pay production by long-term farmer, or part of Glenwood, that's a valley farm business incubator. However, existing access will not, will remain intact. Some portions of Glenopit Lane, which accesses Glenwood, will be resurfaced and maintained in clients' restoration and maintenance manual. Shwana, Shalun carriage road system and access will also be to prime road. So, A, the proposed action may impact classified soils within soil group one through four of New York State land classification systems. The proposed action will not convert a prime farmland soils or soils of statewide significance as identified in Ag-Norbitz. To not agricultural uses. Specifically, the land conversion is going to, to one point four acres of forested meadows, grassland, brush land. Check all these values once we have all the acreage swept. The proposed, proposed action may sever cross or otherwise limit access to agricultural lands. And the proposed action will not, sorry, will not sever cross or otherwise limit access. With the exception of the new draft testimony gateway, gateway, which will be secured through forested area. All site access will be accomplished along existing corridors, including Butterville, Butterfield Road, Willhorsing, Trent Black, High Road, Glenopit Lane. And not the agricultural lands. Proposed action may result in the excavation of compaction of the soil profile of active agricultural land. Again, no active agricultural land is proposed to be permanently disturbed. I did have a question regarding that, um, minor area in Hasbrook has parking that was brought up in the lower estimate report. Uh, the existing meadow, is that considered agricultural land or?
It is a small field, yes, yes, um, I would say that should be part of.
Okay.
Just hopefully that's part of our conversation.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about that possible archaeological thing, what we're gonna have, what's gonna happen with that part of the Willhorsing Trent Black and, and perhaps modify that ever so slightly. Um, but again, um, it's not a significant, significant impact. Cause we're probably talking about, you know, a couple hundred square feet. We get the proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses. Again, it will not irreversibly convert more than two point five acres of agricultural land to non-agricultural uses. Cumulatively, we're at about one point four acres of non-agricultural land. So no, no impact, a little bit impacted, we do this meadow change. E, the proposed action may disrupt or prevent installation of an agricultural land management system. It will not disrupt or prevent installation of such and proportion of preserve located in the foothills parcel is just such a system that being a Glenwood, Hudson Valley Farm Incubator.
So there is a point of information, the village inspector is in discussion with ag markets about what exactly Glenwood's use would be. And that's primarily because it's unclear as to whether it's an educational activity, who the, who is educating farmers to be or whether it's actually agricultural use, which may affect its consideration under ag market law, things of that nature. That will be clarified in, into space and town next month. Well, she's writing it down, what exactly would an agricultural land management system be?
I mean, since we're really not converting any specific amount of agricultural land, we are not really changing any agricultural land management systems. Would that be like irrigation?
I would say it would be irrigation sometime. Molding areas.
Could be draining the field, you mean?
Yeah, draining large, obviously nothing's going on here, so as far as the agricultural land, so. I don't think we're preventing or disrupting any.
The proposed action may result directly or indirectly in the trace development potential or pressure on farmland. And conversely, the Mohawk foothills project will permanently protect the foothills parcel from non-conservation related development. And gee, the proposed plan is not consistent with the adopted municipal farmland protect, protection plan. And again, conversely, the project is consistent with the adopted town of New Falls farmland preservation plan. It aligns with the conservation of active farmlands and agricultural heritage, with such good benefit of watershed protection, wildlife habitat, safety and education. It's also identified that the town has also opened a space plan for conservation of the active farms, which will be accomplished with proposed action, so, um, no significant adverse impact.
Just as another point of clarification, what I understand, what it's doing is, uh, people will come and will be tenants. They'll occupy a portion of the land for a period of years for that particular use that they propose. And then at the end of that time, I believe that use no longer continues, but somewhere else, is the theory.
Right, well, the use will continue and there are not specific, um, sub leases or plots. But there's a common use of portions of the land by their, um, dispense in their program. Those people, when they graduate program, will rotate off the land, hopefully gaining access to farmland or an equity position in farmland elsewhere and a new incubator, dispenser will come in.
Could be doing the same thing, it's like in the university, a company, you take biology, you know, one each year.
Correct, it's a three-year, it's a three-year program.
So for example, you have some form of, uh, grass-fed cattle activity there that after three years becomes new people, let's say.
Right, I mean, they're probably, it depends on which applicants they choose to, you know, bring on for this three-year period to train. But, um, they're, they're generally going to be dealing with small animal livestock, rotational grazing. So those, those will be the types of farming activities. They will share some common portions of land and then maybe some defined, you know, areas like some rotational grazing enclosures that are mobile, that are used by various dispense. And then they will share some of the, um, some of the infrastructure and some of the footprint as well.
In regard to Glenwood, I'm looking for an opinion here. While Glenwood use is part of the foothills, eight hundred and fifty-seven acres. Is it part of this application which involves the, the parking lots and trails and trail nets and?
I think this is the future use to anticipate, it's working.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, from a seeker's standpoint, it's type two, you know, the farming is type two anyway. I mean, it's not, it's, unless there's some kind of deleterious effect on the farmland, it's, uh, farming itself. It'd be type two anyway.
So we're strictly looking at this as part of the cumulative impacts, the impact of Glenwood as well as?
I don't think there's any, let me just see if I can say, any changes to the agricultural business that's going on at eight hundred and fifty-seven acres, I mean, it's other farms, they're all gonna be consistently doing what they have been doing in the past. There's no intent of impacting what they're doing, um, or changing of any of that. Discussion of how Glenwood shakes out is, is something in the future, but.
It's not really relevant.
It's, yeah.
Considerably relevant to this.
Right.
Just doing so much as, for nerves, as common, but you're doing without, using the land or something else. Well, that's just consistent with farming.
There's no increase or decrease, basically.
Consistency in the community character and Glenwood, I agree with some of these, it is consistent. It is consistent? Need to address a few specifics a little more thoroughly. The gateway is consistent with all levels, I'm sorry. And the proposed action does not replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of historic importance to the community. To the contrary, provide expanded and enhanced public access to historic resources of the premise of the site, primarily the gatehouse building, the gatehouse, the Oak LA and the former Warshing Turnpike. In addition, Lenape Lane Bridge, which is in deteriorating condition?
On the, on the, it's a consistency with community character, it says the proposed process inconsistent with the community character. I think the answer, it's an anomaly of the form, I think the answer is supposed to be no. I think it's just, it should say consistent.
It should be, either double negative or...
But I don't know, B, C, got, so I think that should be no.
We will, we will mark it no and say, we'll work the double negative.
With an explanation.
Yeah, all the reasoning is the same, just...
Can we get, jump in a second? I was telling, I don't know, about A. I've been thinking a lot about, I think Kitty brought up about how it does, and I know we talked about this last time too, kind of take away access because it's making people pay for certain areas. I know it was trespassing before, so it's kind of silly to bring it up anyway, but I wonder if maybe we could talk about just some way to kind of maybe like soften that blow to the community in terms of like...
So, we have figured out how to do that, and that is that about one point five miles of trail system on this property, it'll be free to the public, it's connected to the River Ridge Trail that's proposed. So, I can show you on the map. It won't... So, while two parking trailheads will still be places where either you would be a member or you would buy a day pass, if you're coming out on the River Ridge Trail from New Falls as a skier, hiker, bicyclist, and you get onto this loop, first of all, there's Pine Road, which is point six miles, that's town, so that's already free access. There would be, there's the White Oak Bend path that connects Pine Road to Lenape Lane, and then all of Lenape Lane would be free, and then we will create a grass trail across the front, parallel on Butterfield Road, so that this entire loop, which is one point five miles between free and the public, is part of the River Ridge Trail. So, people would be able to do this three point nine miles out from the village and back, creating a free loop around the farm. And that was really, you know, one of the things we heard a lot was that although there was sort of benign trespass, and, you know, Smiley's kind of turned a blind eye to it, the community got used to it, a lot of people really liked this walk around the farms, to be able to see the farms, and it's also fairly moderate terrain around here, before you really go up on the ridge proper. And that's why we felt incorporating this free loop would really kind of, you know, connect the preserve to the community, create this concession, this one point five mile free loop, two miles to be counted, two point one to be counted, the portion that's already free part of Pine Road. So, it really kind of completes the River Ridge Trail, creates something for the community.
That's nice, okay, yeah.
And that needs to be emphasized.
Yeah.
It's a little lacking to provide that, it's great benefit, so.
And with regard to that, for the community?
Well, the parking for that would be back here at the Village Boat Watch or in the village, and we, you know, we don't want people to see that as an opportunity to continue to expand the parking at the, what we would consider an unsafe and unsightly location along Butterfield Road. So, you know, we're gonna, the trail that will parallel the road, we hope, will be designed in a way that also physically discourages parking, although a lot of the parking that occurs, most of it outside, is in the town.
Town redway.
But, you know, we want to really closely monitor that situation, so that really, the encouragement is that free loop starts in the flats and goes out. If you're coming out to park, you have to park at these two authorized safe off-road parking areas.
Then you have to pay a fee.
If you're not a member.
But, I mean, what would you do if people do start parking? The theory that the shortest distance between two lanes is the option.
We would probably go back to the neighbors and see if we could get them to petition town or to pass a parking ordinance.
But you're not gonna say you can't use the trail because you're not parking.
We actually say that now, we have signs here saying that this is not an authorized entry, it's a long preserve, we ask you to go to one of our authorized entries, either the end of Pine Road, or currently the four trailheads that we have. So, there is a sign there now, Lenape Lane, on both sides, when you get out of your car here, it says, it's a courtesy sign that says, really, although this is not in our control, we really discourage you from parking. It's a little more effective because we don't have an ordinance that...
Well, that's an existing situation now. To the extent that the people that are parking, finding the parking lots like they've done at the other locations, I think it will decrease the amount of parking on Butterfield. It probably will not eliminate it, because I'm sure there will be people trying to do that anyway. Or there's a flip side, if people can get dropped off and walk it and get picked up.
My major concern is if you say those trails are free and people park in places that you don't want them to park, and they don't want to go and pay for parking interest site, are they able to use the trail or not? Because I can see where that could become a conflict, and people come and say, oh, we said the trails would be free, but you want them to park today.
I mean, we would, just like we do now, we would encourage people, if you're on this loop, you should park, I want to be authorized parking areas, which is...
I mean, there's nothing wrong with you telling me you should be parking safely. The question is, do we still have access to the trail? Do we have to disregard your time limits?
We would not like to allow people to access the trail by parking here. The problem is we get control to catch them to...
They'll be walking on Pine Road.
Pine Road is where we encourage people to go, it's currently, people are parking in the town redway at the end of Pine Road, but it's sort of a dead end, and it's been going over years.
That's what I was just saying, that's where they, if they're doing that, that trail, they usually park at the end of Pine Road.
And that has really no impact on neighbors because the preserve's chosen, so we certainly do encourage people now to do that. And we could do something without wanting to be unfriendly to people parking there because, you know, we don't have the police power. We could certainly put notices on windshields occasionally saying, please don't park here, use Pine Road, try to change behavior. The main way we want to change behavior in that area is, you know, to create the two nice off-road lots that people will want to use. A lot of people using that area now are preserve members, but they're just parking there for convenience.
The problem is, yeah, if you're a preserve member and you want to walk the trails and the foothills there, there is no place to put your car.
Right.
Unless you go up to the visitor center, that's the closest way you're gonna get to it, and that's, so, from that aspect, to the extent that cars parking on Butterfield are preserve members who just want to do the foothills, they're going in a lot, and I think that's gonna have the biggest impact.
I think it may put some more pressure on Pine Road, but, you know, as we said, Pine Road kind of has the ability to absorb that, because it's a dead end, it's on the set, and it's sort of out of the way, it doesn't have an impact on the river itself. That would be one of the more popular places to jump on, except for, we still encourage people.
Well, I think you'll find people that know the area will use Pine Road, people that are coming up, hopefully will see a sign for River Ridge Trail and parking notifications where they exist, and would pick it up from there, without even getting further along on two ninety-nine.
But certainly, it is a situation we want to continue to monitor, we want to work with the neighbors, we want to work with the town, make sure that, you know, the nuisance doesn't grow.
No, I agree. Okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I actually have one more thing about community character, it's based on the public hearing. I think, is it written down anywhere? Because someone brought up, asked, can we have assurance that there'll be no loudspeakers, sound systems, nighttime lights? Is that somewhere?
I think, I think when we've done the side plan and some of the other points, we've already addressed that use. Dawn to dusk, I think he's got, we can show you where the lights are on it.
Yeah.
And there's...
I just wanted to hammer that home.
And there's no event planning, we've talked about that about it, and so that's inscribed in the minutes so we can get it clarified on there.
Great.
Okay, Carol?
May create demand for additional community services. Proposed action may create, may result in small demand for additional community services. However, given the numbers of calls to balance the preserve land by local emergency agencies, and we probably should provide details as to that.
We have provided that, I submitted a letter from the New Falls Rescue Squad.
Okay.
That said there are two thousand fourteen data, zero callouts to the property's New Falls, and there was one mutual aid callout to request a form.
Yeah, now, we've given the numbers, any increases, any increases expected to be minor, any easily handled by existing community resources that will not exceed their capacity to cite that. The proposed, C, the proposed action may displace affordable or low-income housing in an area where there is a shortage of such housing. Not the case, the residential structures on site will remain so after the project completion, tenders are affiliated with Mohawk Preserve, and the property as part of the Mohawk Preserve is not intended for development in terms of residential usage of people. D, the proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources. The proposed action will not interfere with use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources. While the Mohawk Preserve is not a public resource per se, it is undoubtedly a resource that is, while private, it's available for public enjoyment via the paid entrance into the facility, free access to portions of it, or mere visual appreciation from a distance for all. We'll go on to some details regarding, we'll include a link to the River Ridge Trail, ultimate connect ability to New Falls, the Walkover Trail, will provide additional access to historic testimonial gateway, Hasbrook House, as well as the educational components such as the boardwalk, bird line, open air educational shelters.
The plan was talks about great additions to public resources, it's not... It says great additions to the public resources, but not in the show.
Right, as we said, while not a public resource, it's an access to a publicly available resource. Okay, right, but not a public resource per se, private resource, it's available. E, the proposed action is, here we go again, is inconsistent with predominant architectural scale and character. And the answer is no, because it is consistent with predominant architectural scale and character. The action complies at need of variances of any sort of zoning district. Again, it's less than two tenths of a percent of development, and it's, it complies with seen historic natural aesthetic character of the property. We'll detail some of the characters that are considered, considered, this is a full boardwalk, it's Mohawk design, as well as signage. F, the proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. And again, it may result in small impact to the character of the existing natural landscape. However, the changes are dispersed minimal in size and not in sharp contrast to the broader area. And again, we talk about the proposed improvements, modified, nine tenths of an acre forest, and five tenths of an acre meadows, and there'll be predominant trails access and paving, okay parking. And they've been designed, taking into careful consideration existing vegetation, habitat, natural stream, and natural property, et cetera, and minimally conspicuous. So, bottom line is the impact again will not, will be minimal, not severely adverse.
Okay. I think we've gone through the entire part two, and we're gonna use a complete write-up addressing each of the areas as we talk through them, the issues that have been raised and address them. One issue I had, I set you off on, and I have John and Neil behind me on that, but I just want to see where we are on, in response to HBC's questions. We got a letter this week? Okay, they're here, and I just want to make sure the dialogue, we had the dialogue with the use of the Warshing Turnpike and the meadow, and moving the driveway, and what kind of features prevent that, but I want you to...
Yeah, we would be planning to come for them on December sixteenth and January twentieth to address those parts of the site plan and work on some design negotiations, and I can send it back to you, if you consider our comments and vote for them.
Yes, I, for me, I want to be able to respond to, since the report was submitted to us, and HBC submitted it to us as part of coordinated review and looking at this, my narrative for part two has to address those issues. I know you'll work with them, you may fine tune things on, but the core of what was raised in the letter from October is what I'm looking for the responses are. Okay? John's gonna use, as ZBA does, the planning boards, seek a determination as his seeker for his requirements, so that's why they, we, so, what I'm trying to do is get consistent, you're gonna meet with them in December. I'd like to see sign-offs from both of you, so I know that the issues have been resolved to it and be part of our determination. I'll turn that around and give it a drive, to look through, because if he's gonna use or seek a deter, he's gotta look through the whole document itself, our determination, so that will be part of it. So, we're gonna be working together on that. Okay?
I have a question, just on public hearing wise. Closure and public hearing, or written comments, or is there some...
I think after there is, I mean, we've talked about the need to have an opportunity for the public to comment on the process as it goes forward. I think that should extend to at least a draft, the time limits a draft, part three available, explaining the course determination. So, if there is comment, you can consider what they have said, and then make that determination. The other thing that's concerning me about the schedule is, you guys meet on the fourteenth?
Fourteenth?
Yep. The HBC meets on the sixteenth.
Fourteenth.
The recommendation talks about significant impacts on historic character.
Yes.
That should be addressed in your part three for your determination.
We just discussed that.
I know, but they're going to discuss it.
They're gonna discuss it too, John and I are on board on this.
Want to make sure the timing is...
I gave them the letter, right? I gave, gave them the, the letter, HPC's comments, and specifically, they've taken some of them, modifications of where the parking lot is and where some, they've, they've done that already and that's stated on it. It's that second flat at Hasbrook House. I want some work between them both to, so I can be responsive to it.
Then you have to your final determination.
Right.
Yeah, just the, we have to issue a certificate of appropriations. The HPC. So we're going to review with Glenn and his folks on this December meeting, third week, the third Wednesday in December, who's this, 16th? That's going to be, Glenn is going to present to us the material, the C of A application, and we're going to go over the materials. This, this should be, that's our, I think, that's where he presents to us and we review the stuff. There's going to be a public hearing, there's got to be a public hearing.
Certificate of proof.
Yeah, the C of A, which is going to be in January, January 20th, that's the third Wednesday in January. Our public hearing, we've got post-signs, the home loan, that's going to be, so the output of that public hearing, the C of A, will be our decision. And we will present, we'll provide that decision to the planning board.
But you can't make that decision until this board makes a determination significant. So that, that's where, that's where we're on.
And my recommendation is you also make a recommendation on the site plan.
Yeah.
It's a recommendation, it's not a program, but.
Right.
You provide what to certain site plans to impact historic resources, such as the historic landscape.
Yeah, we'll do that after the first meeting.
In December.
The December meeting.
Okay.
That's right. The December meeting is when we'll be able to do the final stabilized site plan.
So that recommendation will become the basis for the planning board to consider the impact of historic resources. They hit secret determination probably in January. And then that will, you make your determination on.
Right.
Yeah. So, folks, documentation. When do we think we're going to have this all together for the board to remove, review?
We're working on more, you know, finalizing some changes and land changes. So once those go about, then we review and tweak this.
We'll be on your September 16th, June 18th.
Is that what you said, that the meeting is always working?
We work on that.
Today. So again, I just, yeah, I want to get a draft in front of the board to see, but I want it as complete as possible so we don't go back and forth on it. I want to get it out, you know, to the extent we want public comment in January on it. I would think with the holidays, if I got it by the end of the year, as uptight as we can get, we may have some, you know, posted out, people can read it, they got two weeks to read it, I got two weeks to read it too.